Ready to talk?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, Mike. Yeah, mine's later.
All right.
Peter, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I had the question as a choice, but congratulations. I read it and I said, oh, he is a good guy.
All right, we'll get started. Tonight's meeting is to start the budget hearing. So it's Thursday, May 30th at 6:00 PM. The agenda is for the mayor with the auditor, police, fire, DPW assessor and treasurer, and then on June 6th, we'll have a meeting with the other department heads in order to go over the budget. As we all know, it's just going through each of their specific page and then asking questions on whether it's line items or general questions about their budget and then going from there. With that, we'll invite the mayor in with the auditor and we can start the hearing. Mayor, if you want to come in. Think that seat's open. Joe is here. Counselor Tomlin, Counselor Sullivan, Counselor McGivern, Counselor Murphy here. Counselor Born Martinez gave me a call. She's at a graduation for her niece, so she won't be able to make tonight, but she'll be here on June 6th. And people will be coming in and out as we get here. So with that, we'll turn over to the mayor. Thank you for coming down.
Yep.
We do have our budget books and your original letter, and we'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor McGee and counselors that are here tonight, and members of the public, other department heads and those listening at home. You have before you, I assume, a copy of my budget letter. I'm going to read excerpts of it for those listening at home and those in the audience here today. You should also have the budget recap sheet. And then I know Tanya, who you'll be hearing from tonight, also passed out. There were some just numerical errors in a few of the departments, and so we just updated those accordingly. And so that was the Planning and Economic Development Department, the Police Department, Building Department, and Page 47, Debt Principal and Interest. I know we've had some errors in past years, and typically before I arrive on this evening, we just update those pages accordingly. But after much due diligence and with an eye towards fiscal stability, my budget is $134,084,746 for FY '20, which is an increase of 5.7% over the budget I presented to this body last year. Of the total budget, about $68.5 million, 51% or so, is allocated towards the public schools, and $65.5 million or so, about 48, 49%, 48.9% of the budget, is the city's general fund budget. More than half the increase is due to the school budget, which is up $3.5 million at the direction of the Department of Education, which is certainly welcome news to the city and to the school department. And so that was offset by a comparable increase in Chapter 70 revenue from the state. The remaining increase in the budget from last year to this year, about $3.2 million due to fixed costs such as health insurance. We negotiated a number of new collective bargaining agreements, and so union wage increases, and then debt service increase on new capital projects, as well as seeing the expiration of the SAFER grant in the Fire Department. So you've probably noticed an uptick, an increase over last year, a significant increase in the Fire Department. The rest of the budget is essentially flat to our current fiscal year. This was not an easy task. When we started this process, the city's department heads identified needs that would have created a near five and a half million dollar deficit. And with some creative problem solving, we went through the budget several times, identified savings, eliminated more than $3 million right away from the budget at first review, and then we met with key department heads to tackle the remaining deficit. We've reduced that deficit to $891,000 as of tonight. And just note that those reductions were made despite the fact that nearly 75% of the budget consists of salary and benefit expenses. Overall, I believe we've weathered tough financial conditions over the past several years. Our property values were reduced by the global recession that started in 2008. Coupled with that, we lost our largest industrial taxpayer, the Montomb Cole Power Plant, and as a result, we hit the tax levy ceiling soon after. But we have emerged from that cloud. In 2017, we saw the beginning of a turnaround of our property values after years of decline. This year has seen a substantial increase in the assessment of residential real estate values, leading to approximately $900,000 in additional income to the city. We also continue to see the results of years of economic development efforts in other ways, most recently with the completion of the Cubit mixed-use building, the East Hampton Savings Bank branch, Phase 1 of the Lyman Terrace Housing Project, the re-tenanting at the STEAM building with high-quality office space, and the operations of our first cannabis production facility, which all directly increased property values and increased the value of properties around them. Ongoing construction that will be completed this fiscal year, including the retail commercial property at Hampden and Pleasant Streets, additional cannabis grow facilities, processing and dispensing facilities, the new state-of-the-art Peoples' Bank Branch on North Hampton Street, and the growth of Aegis Energy's new production building on Sargent will further strengthen neighborhoods and the tax base. Additional projects range in size from infill housing development around West Eriahurst to the redevelopment of the former Lynch School and former Geriatric Authority continue to demonstrate a healthy pipeline of projects which will continue to benefit our city's fiscal health in the years to come. Providing high-quality city services and supporting economic and neighborhood development are clear priorities in this budget. Without a doubt, the private investment pipeline of over $110 million for the center city and over $50 million outside the city's core are the key to growing our tax base and increasing opportunities for our residents. For the first time in over a decade, the sewer fund is not in deficit. Thanks to the rate increase and to this body, it is showing a surplus of almost $300,000. This is a major improvement in the city's financial position. The $859,000 deficit shown in the attached budget is driven instead and largely by increased debt service of about $650,000 as a result of critical new projects that have long been deferred. Finally, we have based this budget on the latest estimates available from the House Budget Proposal for State Revenue and assessments for FY '20. While there may be some changes as the state becomes, as the state budget becomes final over the summer, we will be in a position to address them later in the year if and when they occur. For the first time, we have included in the budget book information on all of the cherry sheet assessments that the state levies. In previous years, those were not added until the budget was balanced at year end. As we did recently for the FY '19 budget, we are asking you to approve the cherry sheet charges along with the operating budget. Per the DOR, approving these charges as part of the budget appropriation will allow you to make changes to them later in the year if that becomes necessary. And you may remember, we had a little bit of that conversation last year. Overall, the city is in good financial shape. We are budgeting modest additional revenues from increased values of real estate and personal property, a sign of the city's improving economic health. Our financial reputation is strong. Standard &amp; Poor's recently reaffirmed our A1 rating from long-term borrowing, which means we have superior ability to repay debt obligations. Moody's also reaffirmed our A-plus rating, recognizing the city's strong budgetary performance and strong budgetary flexibility. Finally, our stabilization fund is currently at $13.6 million, the highest it has ever been. This rainy day fund has grown 20% over the past eight years due to modest and responsible use and represents a significant hedge against any potential future financial uncertainty. I look forward to working with each of you on the FY '20 budget with a shared goal to preserve essential city services, support the hard-working public servants who dedicate their lives to our great city, and continue to help Holyoke prosper. So I look forward to your thoughts and questions this evening, and I also want to thank the department heads for their collaboration and partnership on this budget. It's not always easy when you put together your proposals and have to have difficult conversations about what we can continue to invest in and what we can't each and every year. But I think we've done a great job of balancing the priorities in each department, and I thank them for being here tonight and in the coming weeks before this body.
Thank you very much. With that, Counselor Bartley is here as well. With that, we'll start over here. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just got two questions for now regarding the School Department and their all other expenses. They requested $24,921,247, and the amount proposed by you is $100,000 more than what they asked for. Can you tell me a little about that?
Yes. So the number you mentioned without the $100,000 would be the minimum net school spending that the city is required to invest, and the additional $100,000 was, is meant to provide additional support to grow the dual-language program at Ian White School. And so there was a long waiting list at the Ian White School for dual-language programs. And Dr. Zrak and I had communicated about the cost of opening up additional classrooms there to get more families off the waiting list and into a class. And so we had conversations about that, and we came to a number of around $100,000 or so that we think would be able to help support the growth of those programs at that school.
So it wasn't in their original request to support those programs?
So their request is based on the minimum net school spending number?
Okay.
And so they don't, they don't usually put together a request beyond the minimum net school spending. So we're pretty much told based on the Department of Education what the minimum number needs to be, and that's automatically the request that populates in the, in the budget request.
All right. So this had nothing to do with what went on the last couple of weeks with the settlement and requesting them to contribute to the...
No, it's not related.
In the city treasurer's office, we just found free cash in there to pay some other fees. And I'm curious how something can have in 2018 a deficit number both in 2018 and 2019, which would be a surplus of cash in the department both years, yet we're requesting putting $5,000 in there.
Can you remind me what line item you're referring to?
So that would be Page 6, and it'd be about, one, two, three, four, about six line items down under expenses.
Land court expenses?
Borrowing certification.
So it looks like the treasurer asked for $5,000, and I funded them at $5,000.
But why would we fund them $5,000 when there's been a surplus of cash in that account for two years now? A significant surplus.
Well, they were budgeted $5,000 last year, and they're budgeted $5,000 again this year. So I'm not entirely sure.
I think the auditor can answer that. There was a, Tanya, was there a, the surplus resulted from a, something that happened in the middle of the year?
I'm trying to remember if that was borrowing certification or land court.
It was borrowing certification.
Borrowing certification.
The treasurer's here. If you want to come up to the mic so that way people at home can hear you. Just remind, if you want to come in to make it easier, you can sit at an open chair or to the mic. Just remember, people at home have to hear you. Thank you.
On the borrowing certification, it's when we band and/or bond. We need that money to pay the fees for the processing with the bond counsel. And last year, there was, if you can see, hold on, I have to give my cheater, sorry. You'll see that there was like $183,000 that was put in there. That was an error on the previous auditor, which would have been Mr. Pichel.
Okay. And even the year before that, there was $148,000 put in there?
Right. Those were both errors.
Okay.
They should have went towards interest and expenses on bonds and bands.
All right.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Joe, did you have a question?
Well, yes. Sandy, we have a transfer in the finance committee that came out that we used this account with a lot more than $5,000, and you signed off on it. Where did that money come from?
Let me just read that. I know, I get it now. There's actually an error. The $183,000 that was in that account, we just found out that the right amount wasn't put into one of the bands, and we have to do a journal entry. That money's not going to be in there any longer, so I'm not going to be able to process that. But we just found it yesterday with bond counsel, so I'm going to do a journal entry. We can't process the transfer from that account because it belongs somewhere else. It was an error.
What are we going to do with, we took the vote.
Yeah.
How do you take it back?
We're not going to take it back, but how are we going to, how are we going to pay for the reason for the transfer?
Well, I'm figuring that out.
We'll figure that out. We'll be able to look at some other lines.
And the thing is, it was, and when the money came in, it should have went to the tennis courts, and it was allocated in, on the wrong line item in the MUNIS system.
Was it a grant that came in?
No. It was the bands and bonds that we submitted in June of 2018. And then what happened was when the, when the revenue came in to cover those bands and bonds, it was just posted in the MUNIS system in the wrong account. So we're trying to make the tennis courts whole, which would make sense with this $180-something-thousand difference. So basically, what I should have in my account for 2020 is the $5,000 that the mayor has allocated.
So the $80,000 that Counselor McGivern's referring to, we took a vote to take, I think it was 80, or 87,000?
68,000.
Oh, 68,000, yes.
To pay legal fees?
Correct.
How are those fees being paid now?
Well, I didn't process the transfer yet.
So we still owe 68,000?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just being clear.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Counselor McGivern, anything else, or?
My apologies, Joe.
I have a question if Counselor Sullivan's done. I didn't mean to interrupt the...
Nope. Go right ahead.
Mayor, thank you, and appreciate the presentation and the due diligence on a balanced budget. You've mentioned it, and I've heard talking to the auditor that, well, let me back up a little bit. We base a budget on estimated revenues. Some are really estimated, some are known, and usually we have those revenues in the recap sheet. And you said that the charges that we're going to find in the otherwise known as cherry sheet are going to be asked to vote on, but we don't have a copy of that. At least, I don't have a copy of that, Mr. President. Was something filed?
So the cherry sheet, they're actually embedded in the document in the relevant department, so you'll see them on the bottom of the auditor's page, and then I believe the bottom of the School Department page. So if you go to Page 3, you'll see RMV, Non-Renewal, Air Pollution Districts, and Regional Transit. And so that's the first time you'll, you'll see those line items in the actual municipal budget.
Okay. So that, those are charges that normally we would see, we've never voted on them, I agree with you. Normally, we would see on the recap sheet, but we don't have the recap sheet.
I have the copies here if you'd like.
No, no, if you have them, yeah, that's what...
Let me, Joe, you don't have this?
Yeah.
Okay, it was submitted.
Maybe we're getting it. Take a motion to adopt the budget. It's balanced.
I have a second.
Second. We try every year, Joe.
One of these years, Mayor, one of these years.
So with that, councilor vacancy up, then we'll go back to you.
So I apologize I was delayed getting here tonight. So I think I just missed the overview summary, so if I can get into some specifics.
Sure, sure.
All right. So I'm interested to understand, because we've had a number of discussions around consulting in the auditor's office, and you know we have our financial consultant. So do the consulting contracts come out of your office, or do they run through procurement? Or how do those work when we have consultants for the city?
It really depends. There's no one line item for consulting, so I believe our financial consultant in the treasurer's office, and Sandy, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, like bond counsel or whatnot are paid not directly by the city, but wrapped into the payment of a bond. So when we issue a bond, those payments, they're paid by the, sort of the third party.
Right. But we do have a contract with them, right, that you signed?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
And then, and then other, like, for example, Brian Smith came on as a consultant or to provide some technical assistance in the auditor's office, and so that was using unexpended, like surplus funds in the personnel line item for a consultant, and so you have to...
In that, in that department?
In that department, yes. And so there's, there's all, there's a whole set of regulations and rules. If it exceeds a certain number of hours or a certain, certain value, then you're required to get, need to go out to RFP. If it, if it's under a certain number of hours or value, then you're not required to. And also, I think if it's less than $5,000, it's, it's not necessarily a contract, it's more a scope of work.
So do we have any other consultants for the city right now besides the auditor's office and the financial consultants that we all are aware of? Are there any others?
The only other contract I have is the one that I, I sent to the council, I think, a couple of weeks ago for Lori Casey.
Okay, I don't know. Do we, do we all have that?
Which one was that?
I just don't recall seeing it.
Yeah. I mean, I sent it to, I think I sent it to Ryan to send to the council. I don't know if Counselor Bartley, if you've gotten that yet, or?
I have not. So that was, may I?
Okay. Paper copy was, was put in, in Ryan Allen's mailbox at least two weeks ago.
And what's it for?
Just a, Counselor Bartley had asked for a copy of contracts with former city employees, and so I was just complying with the request. So it was, it was a consultant contract for Lori Casey.
Okay, we do not have a copy of that. Can you email it, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I filed an order at some point, and then I think the finance chair had a hearing on it, and we were going to get it that night, but I don't think the mayor was able to attend. And then we had a meeting the following week when the mayor attended, and it was, it was supposed to, that order is tabled in committee, but maybe subsequent to that point, you may have submitted it to Ryan. I haven't seen it.
I have not seen it. I have not received it.
So if you can ask the finance chair, I'm sure, just the finance chair, I'm sure will, will, will schedule another finance committee meeting at some point.
Well, I'll be happy to schedule a meeting, but I asked our administrative assistant, and he told me, with all due respect to the mayor, haven't received anything.
So Joe, I'm...
And that's why, that's why we tabled it in committee, and I was just waiting for something to come in.
Yeah, we tabled committee at night, Joe, because we just didn't have anything, and so...
But these informational requests, sometimes they require a meeting, and sometimes they're just complied with once the information is filed with, so I can, finance committee would be happy to do either or.
Yeah, and I would just say, in the future, when it comes to contracts, the mayor's office isn't the holder of contracts. I mean, it's the purchasing department and the procurement department just to keep things standard and efficient. So I had requested of Lori that she put it in the box, and I was told that it was there. But I do have a PDF copy of it, so I could, I could shoot the finance committee an email or the entire council, whoever wants to see it.
So just to follow up, so where would we find that expense if we're looking at the budget?
It could have, could be an unexpended expense or unexpended salary line item. I'm not entirely sure.
In your, in your office?
Yes. There was a, there was a gap in employment in terms of one person leaving and not starting right away, so I'm not sure what FY '20 will look like. But I have brought on a new staff member, and we're fully staffed at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yep. Thanks. Once, if we could go to Page 4.
Yep.
And it would be telephone usage charges. The number you're proposing is 22,000 higher than what the department had requested.
Yep. So originally, the, that delta, that difference was originally in the IT budget, and it had always been in the purchasing department. Then about three years ago, we moved it to the IT budget, and in a conversation with the purchasing director, we decided that it would, it would be best to bring that back into the purchasing department because they directly oversee the phone contract, the implementation of the relatively new phone system. And so that accounts, it's not an actual net increase of telephone use charges citywide, it's just that delta has been removed from the IT budget and back into the purchasing department.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
I'm just going to get into some fundamentals as I'm trying to remember how I used to do budgets back in my day. So let me start off, and I just want to make sure, and this may be a ridiculous question, but it's a question I'm going to ask, because the budget that we received, and I know it's a typo, but if we were to adopt this budget, I wonder if we would be adopting a budget for fiscal '20 or fiscal '19 because the request says for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. I know it's a typo, but if we were to adopt that, are we adopting a retroactive budget to 2019? Page...
It's Page 3.
It's 3, I think, on the, yeah.
Page 3.
And I'm, I'm sure it's just a typo, but from a legal standpoint, if we were to adopt a proposal that indicates that those dates, are we adopting, what, in effect, would not be an accurate budget, and I don't know if that's true or not, but that was the first thing I saw when I saw that, so. And I know a lot of, is a lot of print here?
No.
I would just say, every page at the top says fiscal year 2020 annual budget, so it must have been a typo when the auditors were printing it.
You know, again, I'm just going by, you know, you're asking us to approve the annual budget, and that's the dates that are there. And I know it's a typo, and it may be a moot point, but I'm also saying things where people adopt things based on what's there, and then they're told, well, that's what the law said? That's what the budget said. So that's something we got to get corrected for sure. The other aspect that I'd like to go over, and I know Tanya might have to help on this aspect, but I know we're talking a budget deficit of 891,000. We're talking approximately $7 million more in revenue, right? Approximately $7 million?
What numbers are you referring to?
Total.
Okay.
Total revenue that we're using to apply to this budget. I mean, if we're, one of the things that, and I want to make sure, if we are going to approve whatever budget we finally approve, that we have the money to back up. So I'm thinking it's $7 million approximately. Tanya, can you help me on that?
Whoops. I believe it was the schools actually what had a $4 million increase, did they not? In their cherry sheet, Chapter 70 revenue? It was $3 million or $4 million?
3.5 million, yep.
Okay. Okay. But the total that we're asking for is $7,650,963 more, and I think the city part was 3-point, not counting Chapter 70 or cherry sheet or anything like that. I think the city's part was 3.2 million, and I just want to know where that 3.2 million came from.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand your question.
Well, not counting what we got from the state.
You're not saying, you're not saying an increase in revenue, you're saying an increase in the actual budget number appropriation between last fiscal year and this fiscal year?
What we're increasing, the total expenditures is $7,650,000. So I'm assuming we, and we only have an 891,000 deficit, so we got to be talking close to a $7 million increase. And I know $4 million of that comes from the state, but I want to know, comparing where we were for fiscal '19 and what actually has happened in fiscal '19.
Yeah.
Where do we get the $3 million plus for fiscal '20?
Well, we've already accounted for all of it but 891,000. So that's an increase in residential property values, which is resulting in nearly a million-dollar increase in residential tax revenue. That alone, growth in, growth in property values that the assessor can, can speak more to. It's increase in local receipts, it's the $3.5 million in additional revenue in Chapter 70 aid to the city. It's the increase in the sewer rate as well, so we're counting on additional revenue over last year, this year. So all of that added together. And then I would, I would say, if we were to, if we were to look at a, sort of a graph of the deficit at this point in time, like when we do the budget over the last, you know, 10 or 20 years, the deficit oftentimes is much higher than it is this year. You know, it's still 891,000. You know, it's still 891,000, and that's still premature because we don't have a final state budget or final state assessments. And that may very well change by the time we set the tax rate in the fall. Hopefully get that number as close to zero as possible without having to use free cash. But we expect and anticipate, given that we've eliminated some of the long-term deficits at the direction of DOR over the last two years, the free cash number will be better than it has been. But just to give you a sense, last year at this time, the deficit was around 2.3, 2.4 million. And so we're heading in the right direction. A lot of it is the sewer rate increase that helped make that happen. But we're still left with nearly $900,000 to close the gap between now and October, November.
Could I ask if, if it would be possible to, just what you just talked about there, but provide a letter summarizing, this is what we had last year, this is what we're projecting this year for all of those categories that are not state-funded, but that are impacted by what we do locally so that we can get a clear comparison. And if possible, I would love to have it for FY '18, FY '19, and what we're projecting for FY '20 so we can kind of see the trends, get an idea where this is going. So if I'm going to vote for an entire budget, I want to have a pretty strong belief that I've got money to take care of those expenses.
All right, so you want to see revenues in particular?
Yeah, I like to see revenue and, and with the, you know, residential taxes are going up by this because of this. And this is where we were in '18, '19, '20, and our projection in '20. I just think from my standpoint...
Yeah, I think all of that is, all of that's...
I start with revenue, and then I'll go to what I'm cut.
Yeah, no, it makes sense to me. I think all of it's in writing. It's just not in maybe one central document. So we could, we can compile that together. But we do have a budget summary. The cover letter has a lot of that data. But we can, Tanya and I can work together to put something together in that sense.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Council Sullivan.
Back at you again, Alex.
Hey, Mike.
Get page 10 here.
Yep.
All right, so who, who is the department head for, for this computer system administration?
So this is, thanks for asking, Mike, because I want to explain sort of the direction we're going in terms of IT for the city. So you'll notice that there's no one department head. So we have, so Eileen Poole, for the most part, has been like internal. She's sort of the go-between, between Holyoke Gas and Electric because Holyoke Gas and Electric has managed the IT budget for the city. So Kirk Jonah has really been the point of contact at H. Genie for this account. And so we've been working with Jim Lovell and Kirk on transitioning H. Genie out of providing the direct IT services to the city. And Wally Computer is the, so you'll see in the top line, Computer Consulting Services with an asterisk. And then on the bottom, you'll see under remarks, new contract with Wally Computer. And so it's, we were able to zero out a number of lines because the contract sort of brings together all of different expenses that were in different lines into one annual contract with Wally that provides the 24/7 remote support, people, people on site here at City Hall, police department, fire department. So Wally has had several meetings. When we had a transition in the IT person at the police department a couple of years, a couple of years back, Wally stepped in and has been providing IT services to the police department since then. And while, you know, H. Genie will be the first to, to admit that providing actual IT support for, on hardware and with employees, isn't their specialty. They provide the fiber, the, the infrastructure to provide a system. And we'll, we'll still have, obviously, work with them on some of the infrastructure we need. But Wally would, would then come in and manage IT altogether. And it negates the city's need to have a chief technology officer or director of IT in-house. The thought is, you know, we move in this direction, obviously monitor it. It's a month-to-month agreement with the hope that at some point, the city could consider having its own in-house IT department with a, with a city IT director and city staff. We just don't, that would be going there just too soon, too quickly. So we want to be able to transfer all of the information, work with Wally on sort of troubleshooting where we are, getting a comprehensive plan of our hardware, our maintenance, how many computers we need to upgrade, and a lot of other things. So that's sort of where we are with that.
No, it, it looks pretty good. You know, it's a very slight increase over the previous year for a pretty good consolidation. It just leaves me wondering why, then in the fire department budget, there's still a line item for information technologies for $35,000. It's all consolidated over here now to computer, you know, to, to IT and to Wally. And I think the same's true in the fire department.
Yeah. Let me just check that out.
I'm sorry, the police department.
Yeah, and they, they both can, I, I asked them both the same questions in our, in our budget hearings.
Yeah.
I don't know, Chief, do you, I don't know, do you want to, do you want to wait for them to answer that? Or do you want them to answer it now? Just talk about...
No, we can, we can wait.
Okay. So now they have time to come up with an answer.
Council Vacan, and then Council Tallman.
Thank you. Just following up on that, with, with the consolidation and the switching around, what is the net change in the cost in this budget?
Yep, give me a second. So last year, it looks, so total last year, we budgeted $635,000. So this year, I'm asking for $658,000, so about $23,000 increase over last year with, with a, with a much better service provided to city employees. And I think it would likely be helpful for representatives from Wally to potentially come in and, and provide a, an overview of, of the services, the scope of work, their plan to work with city departments, and implement sort of the new IT contract for city employees.
Are there any perceived or projected savings based on whatever services they will be providing?
Yes, so we currently have a pretty inefficient, inefficient system. And we've, we've looked at some of the data in conversation with Kirk and Jim. We'll oftentimes get, you know, paper requests for hardware from employees, say, my computer is broken. And, and so oftentimes, the, the process to approve that isn't as intensive as it should be. So they're just signed off, and there's really, no one really delves deep enough to say, well, does this person actually need a new computer? You know, we're throwing away computers that can likely be rehabbed that aren't that old. A new employee may not necessarily need a new computer. So they do a comprehensive look at our equipment. They put together a capital budget in terms of IT for the city, you know, with new windows and, and projecting out sort of when technology ages out. And so for an operation in an organization our size, we should have had something like this a long, a long time ago. But we've just sort of done the best we can with what we have. And then having built a relationship with Wally and their work with, with the police department, when unfortunately, the former IT person at the police department passed away, they were able to come in and, and help the police department get back on their feet and get, get everything running. And they specialize in, one of their specialties is municipal accounts. And so we expect that there'll be efficiencies and savings just by being more on top of sort of the expenditures and reviewing the, the equipment and whatnot.
And just as one more question, Mr. President. I had requested a while ago, a summary of the approved debt in the city and a future projection as to what the carrying cost of that debt will be because we've been sitting in here making votes, and we only know what we're paying right now. And now we're looking at a budget, and we'll see what's in it. But we also know there's millions of dollars of things that we've approved that haven't hit the budget yet. And we, and you know, I've been a strong supporter of fiscal reforms in the city for years now. And we need to have our arms around these things. So I'm wondering if those numbers are available for us tonight? Through the auditor or you, or...
Yeah, we do have the information under...
So right now, I do have a spreadsheet available anytime you want it for the current debt that we have. We're working on our bands with Hilltop right now. We're just finalizing the amounts that we need with the bands, which is how we found the error in that borrowing certification line. So once that's done, hopefully it's tomorrow, then I'll send you the whole thing. But meanwhile, if you want the regular debt, I can send that to you anytime via email, if you like it.
Yes, that, that would be very helpful, and I think the full council would appreciate a copy.
Absolutely. I was trying to get it all together so it would all be accurate. But if you don't mind it in piecemeal, I don't mind it either.
I think current is fine, and then the projected. And we understand that when you go out, the actual percentage, you're projecting. We understand that it's not the final exact number. But we really need to understand, have we already added, you know, $3 million of expense to next year's budget that we're not thinking about? I mean, we need to be thinking further than July.
Understood.
Thank you.
Anything else? Council Tallman.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for coming down. You, you talked earlier about all the increases, health insurance, wage increase, debt service. On, on page 48, under Health Insurance Department, there was $12,500,000 requested. And you approved, proposed $10,300,000. Is that about what the range is for the health insurance for the city for the, for the year?
No, so when, when we had to put a request in for health insurance, just based on the timing of when we have departments put the request in, we, the only number we were operating with was like worst-case scenario. So we were trying to be conservative, sort of worst-case scenario. If we actually see the increase that Cigna was proposing at the beginning, a 23% increase, then we would be looking at 12.5. But luckily, in negotiations with the Section 19 Committee and with our, with our brokers and health insurance companies, we were able to negotiate a plan that effectively was a 9%, 10% increase. And so that was thankfully the reduction from 12.5 to 10.3.
And is that the coverage that the Section 19 Committee went along with? And I mean, it's good coverage for the entire employees?
Yeah, and they have to vote, I mean, the majority of the Section 19 Committee and the members have to vote in favor for us to actually execute the agreement with the company. So everyone, everyone that I've spoken to, union representatives on the Section 19 Committee, were pleased with the process and the progress we made, given sort of where we started. You know, we are, we are in the process now of doing open enrollment with employees because we are switching carriers from Cigna to Health New England. The plans are pretty comparable. And I believe when you talked to, when you talked to members of the Section 19 Committee, they would, they would probably agree that it was a good process. I mean, it, there's debates throughout, and, you know, sometimes we tinker with, with things here and there, costs. But we try to keep out-of-pocket expenses low. But, you know, staying with Cigna would not have been in the city's best financial interest in terms of just looking at that number.
Okay, because I, again, information from the water department, I read their newsletter, their meeting minutes, and there's talk about them getting out of the city. Is that still true? They're getting their own? I mean, right now, they're with the city plan?
Yep, and I think they were recently given, they're still, we're still looking into the legality as to whether or not they're able to leave the city and join the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission on the state level by themselves. And we've continued to take a look at it as well. And so we did have a representative from the GIC come out and meet with, we gathered a team in my office, including me, folks from Gas and Electric, Water Department, School Department. And, you know, let's say you're in the GIC in North Hampton. That doesn't necessarily mean it's, it's going to be the same rates and plans in Holyoke. They go based on your population and the data you provide the company. And you can only join for, when we, we had these conversations in, in March or so. So you can only really enroll in January 1st or July 1st. And so we didn't think it would be in the employees' best interest to, to do a, we didn't want to do a six-month health insurance plan with a carrier. It would drive costs up and then switch to the GIC in January. But we have committed, and we've been very transparent with the Section 19 Committee, that there's a possibility of us at least looking closer into the GIC to see if the plans are comparable and if, if it would help keep costs low and, and be able to have projections further out. So we've been transparent about that. We brought some GIC numbers to them this year. And even some members of the Section 19 Committee are open to having that conversation. But there's advantages and disadvantages, advantages to, to, to moving in that direction as well for the city, but...
Okay, thank you. And one more question on 40 on the top line. The retirement contribution, that actually went down this year from last year expended?
Yeah, and I think it's the second year in a row that it's either stayed the same or gone down. And I give a lot of kudos to the retirement board and their advisors and investors. They've been seeing high returns, and they've enabled us to have a, a better schedule in terms of the number we're, we're asked to appropriate.
So that's a, that's a good thing, and that could be continuing throughout the next couple of years. I mean, something I think is important for the city to, because I, I know usually the, the retirement goes up every year, you know, sometimes $500,000 or more, so, okay, thank you.
Council Bresnahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for coming, Mayor. Nice to see you. Do, do we have any cost estimates, or has there ever been a cost estimate review with, for the, for a GIC program?
Yeah, so we, I think we got, we got as close as we ever did this spring because we brought representatives from GIC in, and they met with city officials. And I don't recall the numbers off the top of my head. I think at this point, it was, it was a decision of if we want to move forward, we'd have to implement, implement it January 1st. And in order to do that, we would have had to quote six-month health insurance plans with Cigna, Blue Cross, or Health New England. And when you do a six-month plan with a carrier, they oftentimes inflate the prices. So even if the GIC was saving us money the second six months of the year, just the sheer increase of doing a six-month plan with a carrier sort of outweighed the benefit of going GIC January 1st. So we, the fact we were able to get this number down to 9% was acceptable enough, given the budget situation. And we recommitted ourselves to looking closely at it so that if we, we would have to then make a decision by this January 1st to, to have the GIC in effect next July 1st. And so we're committed over the next several months to taking a closer look and comparing our numbers and seeing if it makes financial sense and sense for the employees of the city. But I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I...
That's fine. Do you know approximately, like, how many different insurance companies are we, is the city of Holyoke dealing with? I mean, I imagine that there's, there's the health, the automotive. I mean, just, just approximately, how many different insurance companies are we, are we contracting with? Just, I won't hold you to it, but is it three, is it five, is it 10?
No, I think, I'm pretty sure we deal with only two insurance companies in the city. That's Dowd, well, no, we have Dowd Insurance, Ross Weber and Grinnell, and Bresnahan Insurance. So Ross Weber and Grinnell and Dowd work on health insurance and also property casualty insurance. Bresnahan provides life insurance to city employees. And then we also have Colonial that provides a life, Colonial and Aflac both provide a short-term, long-term disability programs to city employees. So we try not to, we try to make a, a number of programs available to employees and do different fairs and open enrollment throughout the year, going to different city departments. We try not to overwhelm employees at, at these events, but we want to make sure that... Even with some of the state laws around paid family leave and, and other things, a lot of, no city has yet opted into the statewide paid family leave because, because of insurance, because there's the option, it's more affordable oftentimes to provide a, a short-term disability plan to your employees. And so we've been working with our insurance companies and consultants on identifying options and, and benefits we can provide.
Is the, is the committee that looks at that, is that, how, how is that committee formed?
The committee that looks at...
Insurance, the section, what is it, section?
Well, so Section 19 Committee is, so based on the number of members. So Section 19 was created when the city council, I think back in the early 2000s, adopted a state law that it was to centralize. So if Section 19 Committee didn't exist, the administration would then be compelled to negotiate separately with every bargaining unit. And so what the Section 19 Committee does upon adoption in the early 2000s was create this committee where representatives from each of the collective bargaining units have a representative at this meeting, and their vote is weighted according to the number of members they have in their union. So oftentimes, that means the school department has, given the sheer volume of the employees they have, fire department, police department...
DPW.
Yeah, DPW, they have a big share. So oftentimes, I mean, I think the schools make up almost 40 or maybe even 50%. And so they have a, a big voice in, in the Section 19 Committee. And then, but oftentimes, it's the Personnel Department, Treasurer's Department, my office, that work together on some of the other offerings. So the Section 19 Committee doesn't necessarily decide if we provide or, you know, work with Colonial or Aflac or, or whatnot. It's really a decision of the, of the department head.
Thank you.
Council Bartley.
Hi, Mayor. Thanks, thanks for being here. Just a couple of questions. I, you know, this is not an easy process for anybody. I appreciate your work here on, you can tell I'm stalling. I lost my page. So give me, give me half a second here. I was going in, I was going to look at just two areas. One was the parking. I love a mic. I'll find him here. Department of Municipal Parking, Department of Municipal Parking Facilities. We, we've had Dan for years. Now I see that there's two, are there two employees now giving tickets, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm trying to find what page.
Page 36.
Page 36, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's been some changes here. So right now, we still have Dan, and there hasn't been a, any change to that. There has been, so basically... There has been, so basically, what the DPW have decided to do is take parking enforcement and parking management in-house. So we no longer have a contract with Executive, I believe, is the name of the company. And so you'll see, you'll see by moving in this direction, the overall number in the budget. So last year, we budgeted one eighty-three. This year, they're asking for one sixty-seven. And so you have a savings there of a little under twenty thousand dollars. And so the plan is, so you'll see last year, parking control officer, we had one at forty-one, four-eight-nine. And this year, Mike's requested two. So we'll have two parking control officers, and then you'll see over proposed eighty-two thousand number. And then the proposal is to have one part-time clerk to assist the parking control officers. And then, at the same time, this is happening, contracting with Park Mobile, which is a mobile application that you may see in North Hampton or Amherst where you can use your smartphone to park at city metered spaces. You can, you don't have to have change on you, or you can upload, you upload your bank or credit card information to the phone.
Where's that on here, Mayor?
So that's not on here. So we don't pay, we don't pay the company. So we get a hundred percent of the revenues collected by Park Mobile, and they charge a fifteen-cent transaction fee. And so there's no huge infrastructure upgrade. What the DPW has been working on is taking a, looking at all of the metered spaces we have in the city, figuring on how many we have, how many meters actually needed to be upgraded and fixed. We had a number of meters that just needed to be replaced. And so we've replaced the ones that were broken and not collecting any revenue. And then Park Mobile, it's not as extensive as replacing all of the meters. They come in, you have the Park Mobile signs, you have Park Mobile stickers on the meters with zone numbers. And then the impetus is on them to do a public education campaign and working with the city on public meetings and educating people about the change in parking in the downtown. They would also operate the parking garages, so not just the, not just the parking spaces on the street, but also the parking garages. And we've had a lot of issues and problems with equipment and management of the parking facility. So we think by bringing the parking management in-house, having a second parking control officer with in-house part-time clerk, and then doing the partnership that I think has been successful in other Western Mass communities would increase revenue as well. And so we're not really budgeting for huge increases in revenue yet. We want to see how the new system goes. I'd have to get an update from Mike as to the exact timing of the implementation of that, but I believe it's in the near future.
Okay, so we're just going to follow up on that just for a little bit. But without taking up too much time, we got a lot of VIPs here, I'm just noticing. There's more on the hallway, too. Mayor, I'd like to have a, I'd like to file an order relative to this. I'm going to file it for Tuesday's meeting so we can expand upon the parking situation because we've had other meetings relative to this. I think that seeing this coming, being proposed via budget is maybe, I think there might have been a better way to do it, just so we had a little preview, if you will. And then right here, something about Park Mobile saving expenses, and now we're hiring another clerk or another person to do tickets. I don't know if that's the, and then who's collecting revenue, by the way? So if we took it in-house, who's walking around kind of emptying out the machines and all that? I mean...
We would do that in-house. So even by hiring an additional parking officer and a part-time clerk, we'd still pay less than we paid Executive to do that for us.
So we're doing that, so somebody's walking around. And we've got updates on the, I'm just looking out because I know there's meters out there. I can see them, there are no meter heads on it. Have we got our arms around how many meters we, that are still without a meter head? And we do, okay, I see you nodding your head. And then on the Mayor Prue Garage and then the Mayor Topia Garage, our decks, are they back up and running? I mean, in other words, can I go in there and throw, you know, get a ticket and then pay on the way out, and can we do that now?
I don't think at the moment. We've had to, we've had to navigate that based on equipment and the work of Executive and...
This Park, I don't mean to drop, I just, I don't want to, because this is a far longer discussion. So I'm good with it. But Park Mobile, are they going to address some of these situations?
We're going to work together on them. I mean, it's really incumbent on the city. So Executive was in charge of that, and so it's the city spending more of our time, investing in two additional staff members to work on managing that in-house.
All right, and then I see the estimates on here for revenues. When I see parking transit for, if you, I would love to have you just change those to the right names at some point in the budget, just Mayor Prue and Mayor Topia since we're so nice at the name of the garages after them. But the Dwight Deck, I mean, we make, in the order that I filed, you know, whenever it was, six years ago, on that one parade weekend, we make more money than a thousand dollars on that one, on load raise day. So I'm not sure where these numbers are coming from, if anywhere. And I just think we can, I just think we need to do a lot better with that. But I'm going to, I'll file an order for Tuesday's meeting, or maybe the following Tuesday, the eighteenth, and just to set it up so we can have a discussion of finance, if you would.
Yeah, we're happy to talk more about it.
Yeah, if you would, okay. And then just the last thing, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, we have on, we have, I haven't gone through the whole thing, but I was working with a couple of my colleagues the other day, and you know, they're very gracious enough to, they did a great job and helped me get through this. But we have three floating clerks in three different departments. And so the floating, the one in Treasury, one in Assessor, and one in Board of Health, and the floating clerk total's somewhere around, you know, just, I mean, I'm not, a hundred-five, a hundred-ten thousand. Just a hundred-five thousand dollars in floating clerks for these departments. And do, is this, this is more than one person, I take it. But when we see, I see something called floating clerk. I don't know how many people are here. I don't know who's working these jobs. I think we've got to be able to drill down a little bit more for those three. I would just ask you to, I mean, I think you used to do this before with former President Jordan, and hopefully you can do it again. I mean, the work you did and your team did to put together a budget like this, it just has to take a long, long, long time. But now that you're going to have a chance to get some feedback from this body and maybe listen to the tapes when you get a chance with some of the department heads. I thought in years past, it was helpful when, before we came to the budget time, that we were all kind of in agreement on some of the cuts that we could make. You know, instead of us making draconian kind of cuts, which none of us wants to do, to cut back a budget, the deficit. I heard what you said about the deficit being trimmed, so we appreciate that. But we, you know, I feel like we need to do better to get a little closer to, I mean, we're not going to level fund it, we know that, but we need to do a little bit better to try to get closer to a level budget at this point. I know the Finance Chair wants to pass it tonight, but I know he's just joking around. But eight-hundred-ninety, we're still off by eight-ninety-one. And it would be nice if we could, if you have a chance over the next three weeks to go back and maybe revisit some of your decisions. I know you made a lot of cuts. I'm not saying you have to, but that helped us before in budget time just to come with some agreed-upon cuts, even though you've already done your due diligence in the budget. So, and if you can't, then you can't. So that's that, thank you.
No, I, yeah, no, I appreciate your thoughts, and I just want to make it clear that I didn't work directly with Kevin Durden on that list. And I actually thought it was a violation of open meeting law that there was conversations happening with a list of potential cuts being handed out to counselors before the meeting, so.
Oh, I wasn't saying, I think in years past, we had, the president will recall, we had a series of cuts that were, I think we voted on those in the first ten minutes of the budget hearings, that we'd agreed on them.
If there are mistakes or errors, and I say, hey, you know, and I would do the same with Counselor McGee, like, hey, we budgeted this a hundred grand over on accident, we got more information, I would certainly let the council know that, please cut that. And if there's anything between now and the night, whenever that is, that happens, I'll be sure to let you know. But I do know that Counselor Durden had a list of cuts based on his opinion as council president that was passed out on a regular basis and pre-identified, not in collaboration or consultation with the mayor's office.
Yeah, and just from my perspective, I was never given that list. I can only speak for me until the night of the budget hearing, I never, the budget vote. So I never received it beforehand. Now, maybe other counselors did, but I didn't. So I, and I wouldn't think Kevin would at all ever violate an open meeting law issue. I don't think he did in that regard, so, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, a few things. First of all, I certainly agree with Counselor Bacon. I think a complete listing, year by year, twenty years out of our debt, both principal and interest, when are some, I know there are some expiring in the next two or three years because I, prior to becoming a counselor, I was looking at that. Because I was making sure you guys were doing your homework. So I really would appreciate that, Tanya, and the mayor, that we get that, what's current right now that we know for twenty years out, and then what we know is going to be coming in in the near future with, even without the necessary figures, at least we know those are going to be coming. But if we could get that, that would help us plan a lot of things. So that was number one. Number two, regarding the health insurance, as a former person who had GIC and in my retirement, still have GIC, do you know what the percentage, if you were to compare, if we were able to have done GIC, would it have been less than nine percent? And secondly, if we go to GIC, do we, two questions related to that. If we go to GIC, is it more than a one-year commitment? And with Health New England, is it one-year commitment?
Yeah, so Health New England's a one-year commitment. If we went to GIC, we'd have to be there for a minimum of two years. And so that's, you know, and sometimes you're not sure what the price will be the next year. So you lose a little bit of local control, and then you no longer deal directly with your brokers, and the Section Nineteen Committee loses some authority. So there's advantages and disadvantages on the local level. I don't have a specific number to say, hey, it would have been like five or six percent if we went with the GIC this year. As I was saying before, I think it was comparable. I mean, I could probably look and get back to you. I just don't have the information tonight. But I think even if it was a little less, I think the issue was we didn't get the numbers in time from the GIC that, again, quoting a six-month plan for Health New England would have just ended up being a wash. And so we said, well, let's be more thorough, let's really make sure we get more information before we make a big decision that will likely be a difficult decision for the Section Nineteen Committee and the administration to potentially agree upon, and then see what those numbers are. And if we can make a compelling case financially for the city in the long term and that the benefits in the plan are comparable to what we have, I think we would have a strong case to make.
Yeah, I mean, just, again, knowing people that are in other plans and knowing people that had GIC, and based on my own experience, I see GIC as a very good plan and does provide excellent benefits. Couple of questions that I'm not going to go into specific items on, in the budget itself, but more related to some of the services that are provided. And I'm going to ask the chief and the superintendent when they come. But number one, do we have any money for community policing?
Yes, and...
Could you tell me where that is then?
Yeah, so community policing isn't necessarily like a line item or a program. We see it more as a philosophy. So I know the chief could speak more to this, but I mean, whenever we hire police officers, it's more than just driving in a patrol car and locking people up. It's how you act when you're on the job, it's pulling over, it's playing basketball with the kids at a basketball court, it's going to the Boys and Girls Club. It's being part of the community, being a role model and developing those relationships so that people feel like they have a relationship with an officer, they could potentially provide information to both prevent crime and solve crime after it happens. And so I feel like the police department have done a good job in that. So you won't see a line item that says "community policing." In the Community Development Block Grant budget, we have allocated twenty thousand dollars with a grant that we got to focus on, I know Sergeant Hart has been working on this, to do more community policing there and target opioid abuse in particular. And then the police department does get a lot of grant money that, whether it's from, like, gang suppression, gang task force money, that allows us to deploy the mobile community policing unit, to have extra shifts out in certain neighborhoods, depending on if there's issues in a particular neighborhood. I mean, I know the police chief would agree, we could always use more resources to have more officers on the street in addition to the, you know, seven or so patrol cars we have out on every shift. But we try to make sure that we hire officers and train officers to be mindful of being part of the community when they're on the job. And frankly, the overtime line item, if there had to be a line item, is that line item that would, hey, in addition to the seven cars, you know, we had a shooting or an incident in this particular neighborhood, we should use some of this overtime money to put a few extra officers on bike or on foot patrol, deploy the MCP, set up a tent, walk around, make sure that residents feel safe, they can send their kids to the park. And I know the chief uses his discretion as to when to deploy those additional resources. And the additional resources oftentimes look like what community policing would look like in many people's eyes.
Well, we still have, I know you had a community policing bus, van, or they used to travel to various sections. I know several of them in my ward.
Yep, that's the mobile community, that's the MCP, the mobile community policing unit, yep.
So, I mean, just again, and the chief and I have talked as well, so he knows what my feelings are. But, I mean, I know South Chestnut Street Park, I know Valley Arena Park, which is coming online. I know Vega Park. There are concerns, and I've talked to the chief, you know, about potentially having bike patrols with police officers coming on bike and kind of really demonstrating that there's going to be a police presence on a, I won't say a scheduled basis, but on a consistent basis to deter people and to also encourage families to feel like their children can be in those neighborhoods. I mean, I'm hearing it, as you, I'm sure I've heard, with regard to the Valley Arena Park already, that there's a major concern in terms of how are we going to get kids feeling comfortable there. And I can just tell you, I had a community meeting, I had a ten-year-old young man stood up before thirty-five people, and he said to me constantly, they can call me sir. "Sir, can you help make this area secure?" That's a ten-year-old kid who is not comfortable, and his mother is not comfortable with him walking the neighborhood. So we need to make sure, whatever we do, we need to make sure that we provide that safety. So that's number one. My second point, and it may go to the other aspects, and I've talked about this as well, and that's, at one point, we had a dedicated officer regarding domestic violence. And Sergeant Hart knows, I've been an advocate since I got back, and I was an advocate way back, to try to do more to not only react to domestic violence, but to come to the point where we can prevent worse domestic violence. And so, you know, again, I would encourage us, and I know, I think the person that did it retired, and I don't think we've replaced it, but again, I think at some point, based on the number of calls we get, based on the potential damage to families and to people's lives, I've been told, and I've been waiting to get the final statistics, that having a dedicated police officer on domestic violence does improve and reduce the, both the repetitiveness and ultimately the more serious offenses. So whatever we can do in that aspect, I certainly would appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor, I agree.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to recap a couple of things and touch them again. And Counselor Bartley's right, with tongue-in-cheek, I made a motion to pass the budget. But the tongue-in-cheek is, I take this forty-five-day process very seriously. But at the same time, I recognize the efforts of you and the, all the departments of the City of Hoyok to put together a reasonable budget. And to me, and that's why I asked about the cherry sheet this evening, I've always asked about it, is it's equally or probably more important to understand the revenue side of a budget. And we know it's estimated. The new growth estimation is, sorry, it's pitiful, five hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's what's killing the city. If we can't get more new growth than that, you know, we need to start doing some serious cuts because we're going to be in trouble in the upcoming years in terms of raising revenue. The good news, as you pointed out, is the school budget. And I have one question about that, is in the past, we, and we don't have line item control in the school committee, unfortunately, because of receivership, doesn't have line item control. But the vote we've always taken is on the net school spending figure. And, you know, I get it, the schools have involved us more, the receiver and his business manager, and we appreciate that because I think we've learned more about the school budget in recent years. The charter school formula is that the state is currently discussing about meeting their obligation. You know, the Chapter Seventy argument, which is giving us more money, but it's giving everybody more money. So when you look at the issues and the special education needs and the issues that the City of Hoyok faces when it comes to schools, it's a... it's a blessing, but it's kind of a hidden blessing in that they're just doing it across the board. Extra revenues on the state level, I think, is part of what's going on, which, and the commitment to education, which is all good. But if we take a vote on the budget with the entire, are we voting for the entire figure, or are we just voting for net school spending? Because, as you know, and I think everybody knows, the state hasn't passed their budget yet. And a big part of our estimated revenues in this cherry sheet is what the state passes in their budget. And this happens every year. They, you know, they tell us we have to do our budget within this forty-five-day period. Mayor, that means you started probably two, two and a half months ago.
Late in January, yeah.
Yeah. And you're dealing with a moving target on the state level, because, I mean, there's been times when they haven't passed the budget until the fall. And we've had, we've had to cut budgets because we didn't get what we expected. So with that in mind, I, you know, when I look at this deficit compared to the deficit last year, because we knew what was going on with the wastewater treatment plant, we knew some other areas that were deficient, this is more of something that we can handle. I'm not going to ask until later about what, if there is a free cash estimate yet, because I love asking that this time of year. I think free cash is still being looked at by the auditor, or what could potentially be free cash in being used for deficits as this year comes to an end. And this is my second question. The first question about schools, but I can get an answer to that. The second question is, in the health insurance. A representative from the Section 19 Committee and I had a conversation about a month ago, and there's a lot of concerns about the dental insurance and a lot of concerns about the deficit within this year, within the health insurance. Has that been rectified to the city portion of what we owe? Because that is one, can be one big moving target, the way we do health insurance and dental insurance these days.
Yeah, so we were in a little bit of a deficit this year in the health insurance line. I could probably let Tanya speak more specifically about, so this year's health insurance line?
So this year's health insurance line currently has a deficit of $400,000 in it right now, which we are going through the departmental budgets and looking at salary lines that have been open and processing transfers today and tomorrow to cover the deficit, hopefully. Same with the dental trust. The dental trust, it's not this current year, because this current year is fine, but in previous years, it's actually not a legal trust. It's an accounting trust, so it's a separate fund, where the state was supposed to be matching, I mean, the city was supposed to be matching the employee portion of the contribution, and we were not matching it fully. So we've gone through the whole account, figured out, I think we came up with like $300,000, $282,000 needs to go towards the previous year's deficits, towards the dental trust. And I'm working with the assistant, the treasurer, and the tax collector.
Is that a transfer that's going to be coming to us?
Yes.
Next couple of days?
Hope so.
Or before the end of fiscal year?
Yes.
Mayor, I think, I mean, that's a fairly large number. It was larger, I understand, the person I talked to on the Section 19 Committee. And with that in mind, I would suggest for the month of June that we freeze overtime accounts within all departments, except for absolutely necessary overtime.
And I would say to your first question, Joe, about the schools, yeah, we adopt this number, it's the number. And so what happens, depending on the state budget, is when we go to balance the budget in the fall, we would hope that it's either stable, or we, or the budget picture from the state, the Senate Ways and Means, and the final budget is, we always hope that it's better than the assumption that's made in the House budget, but we don't always, we can't always predict that. So we'll update the council, obviously, as we go to balance the budget in the fall and say, well, we finally got the state budget numbers, and this is, this was the implication on the, on the revenue side of the city budget.
Counselor?
On the overtime accounts, the reason I'm suggesting it is that if the auditor is looking at what at this time of year would be adding up for next year's free cash, to use it to pay for a deficit like this. So if we don't hold back on some of our expenses for the final month of June, you know, we could be exhausting any chance of free cash for next year, and then this $800,000, $900,000 deficit becomes a real deficit.
Yeah, I think, you know, looking at the three biggest departments in the city, so you have, you know, police chief and the fire chief and the DPW superintendent, and looking at other, at other things, and we do send a communication out to department heads a couple of months before the end of the fiscal year, that we take a closer look at transfers and purchase orders, and certainly have a conversation with them about overtime spending. It's also delaying potential open positions and taking longer to fill them, if it means capturing some additional revenue to balance a deficit.
Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yep, thanks. And Alex, I'd just like to make one, on the revenue side. We, and I've requested this numerous times from the solicitor's office, and I'm hoping, you know, in the situation where, and you could bring a little extra pressure on them. There's a substantial claim that the city has outstanding against NASD and their insurance company with the collapse of the Essex House. It's dragged down way too long. It's a substantial amount of money. There's, and I've suggested this to the legal department, there's two avenues they could take. One called a 93A, which is a consumer protection law, and there's a 176D, which is unfair insurance settlement practice. And one thing the insurance companies do, they'll just drag this out, drag this out, drag this out, forever. And literally, and we can see right now, it's probably been over four years, I would think that this has been out there. The hurdles for winning a 176D or 93A are substantial. But the threat to the insurance company and to their client of triple damages, plus interest, plus legal fees, would, in many, many, many cases, the insurance company's out to minimize risk, and even to take the slight risk. I think this is additional revenues we could capture very, very quickly if we took a more aggressive stance and use these, one of these tools available to us.
No, I appreciate that, and I can, I could certainly touch base with the law department on that and ask them to look into those two courses of action. Thanks.
Anyone further for the mayor?
I just have one, Mayor, because it already came up, we had to get free cash to cover it. And that's on page 11, the, our admin for advertising, it's left blank again, as we know, for ordinance or anything else, we have to do advertising of things. We need it in the budget to pay for those costs. Is that going to be fixed? Is that going to be?
Yeah, there's no problem with that. I just, when this was presented to me, that it was zeroed out, so I didn't even, like, when you look under the column of requested, there was zero requested there. And so I usually assume that the department head who filled this out just didn't put a number there.
Nothing comes to me to fill out.
Yeah, so I mean, your administrative assistant fills this out on the council's behalf, and so there was no number in there, as far as I know. And if there was, I wouldn't have zeroed it out.
All right, so we're going to have to...
But we could, we could provide a supplemental page, similar to what we've done with the other departments, with the appropriate number. I would just need Ryan to tell us what that number is.
I think if I could, Mr. President, that's a good point, and this goes back to when the city messenger was also the administrative assistant, and it was a separate department budget. It's no longer a city messenger position, and I think the president of the city council and this budget with the city council budget should be one page, and there should be the president with the city council filling out the budget and the salaries for our administrative assistant and our salaries coming underneath it together.
I put a raise for us, Joe. I put a raise in for us.
Yeah, but you know, you go into the mayor, you might get it.
Yeah, and I'm sure we're happy to probably consolidate those two on one page, too.
I think it just makes more sense, not this year, but maybe next year.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's no one further. I want to thank the mayor for coming in.
Thanks, Counselors.
And with that, next on the list, we have police, fire, DPW, auditor, assessor, treasurer. The world of the group, do you want to have police and fire come in, or do you want to take them one at a time, whatever's easiest for you guys? Have the police, start with the police. Good evening, how are you, sir?
Good evening. Good evening.
Do you have anything to start with, or do you want?
Sure, I'll have a short statement. I'll start by going over some facts. In 2017, we had a $12.2 million budget plus $450,000 in overtime. 2018, we had a $12.3 million overall budget plus 400, that included 450 in overtime, 450,000. In 2019, this fiscal year, we had $12.2 million budget with $300,000 in overtime. And this fiscal year that we're in now, four percent raises kicked in. The police department has made cuts in every area possible. Some of the cost savings that we made are some of the changes. We reorganized the entire organizational chart to reflect three captains instead of four. We reduced a seven-car plan to a six-car plan. We admitted, we eliminated an entire technical services bureau. We formed a partnership with Sheriff Kochy to deliver our court processes. This allows us to free up a line car. We put more guys in uniform, and we increased our reserve staff to 24. It's been a challenging first year financially, and the changes were tough. But the men and women of the Hoyok Police Department marched on and continue to serve the citizens of Hoyok without complaint. It's been truly my honor to serve as their chief. With that, I'm ready for any questions.
I have a question for you, chief, because, and I think everyone knows, the chief invited every counselor into his office in order to go over kind of stuff you just pointed out, as well as some budget issues. And one thing the chief brought to my attention, because it was me who did it, I cut the, or asked for a cut in the captain's line item, not getting rid of the four captains, but just cutting it to then try and use some of that money for the salary increases for the forty people who haven't gotten a raise in about ten years. So that was approved, but in this budget, instead of having the four captains, it's now down to three, which, that was different. I never asked to reduce the total number of captains, just the salary from last year alone. That was it.
Right. The ordinance is still the same. The number is still four captains. It's just not funded at this point.
I understand that. My point is, last year, four at X amount. Here, we're saying it's only three. So if we were to have the fourth position listed, we'd need it in the budget. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Correct. I agree. And it was in it when I submitted it. But after negotiations and budget meeting with the mayor, it's, that funding has been cut.
Just, if you want to cut, you have to come up to the mic, please.
Just to clarify that, you probably have the last version. There's a new version to the budget, which, because there is a mistake in that number three, it should be four.
That's my point. So it should be four, not three.
Right. It's been updated. I apologize if we haven't sent an updated version.
All right, so with regards to the updated version, I got to be clear, yeah, I got to be clear on this. We were approached by the auditor when coming in, saying that there are either mistakes or number changes or adding of positions in, not your department, other departments. If there's going to be a supplemental budget, it has to be forwarded to the council to then be received, process-wise, and then to act on it. All we have before us that we received, and in compliance with open meeting laws, is this budget. That's why I'm referring to the three. So if you're saying it's now fixed, we're going to have to get a supplemental budget to come into, to fix that number. I just want to be clear on it so that we don't lose the position. That's my point.
Okay.
Counselor Veken?
And I just want to note that if we end up with three or four of these, and they're not incorporated into this, it's going to become a mess.
That's why it has to be received and then put into a final form, so that way we're working from one document. Otherwise, it's going to be all over the place, and things are going to get lost in a shuffle, and that's not how you're supposed to do it.
Thank you. I understand.
Also, the question I had, because we discussed it, and I was adamant about it, where are the cars?
The cars are on the expense side of the budget.
All right, show me. What page?
148 to 24, it's there.
Fifth one down, Todd.
Fifth one down?
Yep.
Oh, okay, that, because it says new, there's no line item to it. That, that's why I was missing. It has to have a line item to it? A code?
It does have to have a code.
Object code.
It has to have an object code, because if we're going to cut it, it just can't say new. It has to have an object code to it. So I'm not going to refer to new.
I just wanted to speak on that for a minute, because you might see it in other budgets. So I was told that I shouldn't create accounts in MUNIS by the external auditors that have not been approved.
That's my whole, that's my whole point.
I can give it a number, I guess, if that's what needs to be done. I can do that. Yes?
Yeah, it was from the council at a full meeting, that the mayor appropriate this as an account item in the budget so we can do the leasing, I know it's not leasing, it's half-pay this year and half-pay next year, in order to get the cruisers up and running.
No, that's, it's fine, and I don't, I don't mind giving it a number at all. I just was trying to do what I was, you know, what was told to me by the auditors. Because you don't want to create a bunch of accounts in the MUNIS system when they're not approved, because then you have accounts that are, like, clogging up your system, which we have a lot of those right now. But I can give it one if it needs it, and I'm sorry.
All right, that's, okay. Just want to make sure we document that correctly. Okay. I'll open up to Counselor Murphy, Counselor Veken.
Yeah, Chief, let me start with the patrol officers, and I know it's budgeted for ninety. How many patrol officers do you have currently?
Sorry, currently I have eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight? And you also have reserve officers taken at the academy, or is that happening pretty soon?
Um, I have some in the part-time academy, and some are going in soon.
Okay, so we're, should be at ninety pretty soon?
No, there's a difference. There's full-time patrol officers, and the reserves are the reserve officers.
Yeah, but I'm assuming we'll appoint some patrol officers. I'm assuming you probably also have some retirees coming up.
I have patrol officers in the full-time academy, should be getting out in July.
Okay. The building maintenance man, just, and I'm not quite sure, I mean, I'm looking at it, and it looks like the salary went up $15,000, and that seemed like a pretty good raise. I thought I might apply for that job, chief.
Standby, let me find out.
So last year's budget was 38, 586, and halfway through the year, 18,000 was spent, but the budget is 53, 429. So I didn't quite think that could be right. Page 18. 51120 on page 18, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yeah, just towards the middle.
Okay, it's 53,000, 429. He did get a raise, contractual raise this year, that we were able to absorb.
Of almost $15,000?
Yeah, looks that way. We've expended so far in that line item, $35,383.
That would still be pretty close to last year's budget, or this year's budget of 38.5.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly why that went up. Kate McCoy does these projections, and I go over them, but I didn't catch that 15,000, but I do know he did have an increase last year.
Okay, I'm okay with an increase, I just, I have a hard time supporting a $15,000 increase for the same thing, but...
Is that a union position?
It's a DPW position, but he's in our budget. But he's in our budget. Is that? It's Frank LeBoy.
You can always get back to us on that, just for confirmation.
I'll have to look into that, and get back to you on that.
Okay, and on line 51201 for the matron. I know two years ago was 42,000. We've only, and halfway through the year, we spent a little over 13,000. And now we're proposing 50,000. I'm assuming there's a raise there, but again, that looks like a pretty substantial raise. I know you budgeted for 50,000. Was there an opening last year, that person didn't work for a while, and that's why?
The matrons are kind of hit or miss when we have females prisoners, and it depends on, it fluctuates a lot, is how many times we call them in or not. I don't think they get a raise, they haven't gotten a raise in a while, actually.
So that's for multiple people?
Yes, that's for multiple people. And if their hours are not set, we call them in as a, as needed basis, so that line item doesn't change.
So that's not a salary jump, that's just, as you need them, you call them in?
Yeah, and that covers multiple people.
And I know you're gonna agree with me on this one. Be hard to believe you wouldn't, but the overtime account at 350, I mean, you already spent 360,000 this year, so.
I spent a lot more than that.
Well, that's halfway, that was halfway through the year.
Right, correct.
So realistically, without jeopardizing public safety, how can you live at 350,000?
Well, it's a, it is a $50,000 increase from the current fiscal year budget, which is, you know, it was a lot of maneuvering to make it this year without coming back. As you know, I haven't come back to ask for money. But I'll do the best I can, I try to make it.
No, I appreciate that, Chief, and I know you're in a difficult position, as is the fire chief. And obviously, you're a rather crucial function that you provide here, so, I mean, if we have to cut other areas in order to be able to make sure that when you need to have police officers there to fill the spot, that you don't have to worry about, yeah, we have, we don't have money in the budget, so. I mean, that's, that's, it's not a budget cut that I would be looking at as much as trying to figure out how to get a functioning amount without risking public safety.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your meeting. You're very good to be meeting with. Couple other things, and I know court appearances are pretty much dependent on arrests and trials and all that kind of thing, so, I mean, I know your budget is 200,000, you got the same thing. Do you know where you're at with that, at 11 months?
Yeah. Year-to-date, we're about 120,000.
Okay. And your previous year, you were 155, so there's a potential that there could be some money there. Although, there's a few people I'd like you to pick up, by the way.
Yeah, I, I would, I would ask that this budget overall, as you know, we move money around, we have to. This year, we moved 25,000 of that into overtime, and then 26,000 into sick buyback. So we do try to make moves to stay within the budget. So if we start cutting too much, and I can't move money into overtime, I'm not gonna make the year, and I will be back. And I'm, I think right now, we're bare bones, this is a very, very tight budget.
Could I make a suggestion, in terms of being able to review something? Obviously, you, you know better than, especially better than I do, probably not better than the other councils do, but certainly better than I do, where you've had to move things to get things balanced. I would much rather have that information, so that when I'm looking at that, and I were, if I were looking to cut something, I say, well, wait a minute, they took 25,000 to make it. And potentially encourage the overtime account, or whatever account, needs to be adjusted to request that the mayor transfer some of that money, and not, not putting it where you're gonna have to be doing operational changes when you know you're gonna need more money in overtime in other cases, so. I mean, to me, it's kind of like we're doing this backwards, that we're saying, we know we're gonna need more, but let's put it there, and then we're gonna take it out as we go along, rather than, let's be realistic, you're not gonna do it with 350,000.
We're definitely not gonna do it with 350,000.
So let's cut where we can cut, and put it into the overtime, so that's just one thing. And just last two things on that page. Well, actually, two more things on that page. So the educational plan in Quinnville, that's just for officers prior to when the state decided not to fund us, correct?
That's correct.
And am I correct that the contract education plan is for those officers that have come on after the Quinnville situation?
That's correct.
Okay. And lastly, just in terms of energy consumption, I know your budget was 120. Halfway through the year, you spent 41, and the year before, you spent 97. Do you know where you're at with that?
I do not, at this point. I, my updated sheet, for some reason, didn't print up with any information, just the 120,000 allocated. And I can get back to you on that, but I don't know where I'm at to the date.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And I'm gonna defer to, but I, and again, you've heard my comments, you know my feelings about the community policing, and how much I want as much. And, and I want to see the parks and the kids out there feeling comfortable, and the families feeling comfortable, and I don't want that 10-year-old coming to me and saying, can you make it more secure, so I can play in the playground? And I know you're doing all you can, and so if we can provide any assistance to further that, I would appreciate it. And I also, again, would like to urge you to try to work with the mayor to specifically look at how we improve our domestic violence situation, and how we reduce it, eliminate as many repetitions as possible, and make sure that when repetitions do happen, they don't get so bad that we're not talking about getting a beating, we're talking about someone getting killed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Vakin?
I just have a comment, and then a small thing. Counsel Murphy covered most of the areas I had any questions about. I just wanted to thank the chief for the meeting that he had with me this year. It was probably the most substantive meeting I've had with a department head since I've been on the council. And I've been here a while now.
Thank you for that.
I really appreciate it, and I really appreciate the due diligence that you have done relative to this. We know you can't know every detail of the budget, but it seems to me that you've gotten into it a lot deeper than a lot of people do. And I also, although I'm known as a budget hawk, I appreciate the approach that you've taken relative to the vehicles. I think it's practical and pragmatic, and it is just something that will make things work forward. And in a way that the people on the street have the vehicles they need, and we have budgetary, what do I want to say, stability, relative to it. You know, instead of every three years, six, one year, none, you know, and all that. So I think it's a good approach, and I will support that. The only remaining question I had, because we do have to look to close that gap, and, you know, I, I do understand the context we're in, is just on line 53190, under education and training. It just looked like, you know, there might be 10,000 in there that you didn't use. And I don't know what you might have used it for, but if that's another thing, to Counsel Murphy's point, that went, ended up going into the overtime, it, it would be helpful to understand that. Things come to us, they come and they go, and we don't remember all the transfers. And those reports that we get are a nightmare to look at. I mean, I, I know the numbers are all there. I'm not criticizing our auditor or anybody in finance relative to that, but they're very difficult to wade through, to know what's what. That would be my only question, and it doesn't have to be answered this minute, but, you know.
Okay, I'll, I'll address that. The education and training, first of all, $11,000, right off the top of that goes to pay the Hoyouk Revolver Club for our, our membership, for our firearms training. It pays for officers to go to training, outside training. It also pays for instructors, because we do, we're one of the few departments around that do our own in-house, in-service training, which, which helps. We have a lot of very skilled trainers that are certified through the MPTC. And that would be, that, I think, yeah, three-year average is 42,775 out of that. I would say we'd be very close to the 50,000. So a cut would be tough in that area, especially when it comes to lawsuits and things like that. Education and training is very, very important.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Tomlin?
Thank you, Chief, for coming down and going over the budget with us. And thank you also for the time you spent with me, going over issues in the city in regards to public safety, and what we need to do in our community to keep it safe. One of the questions I always ask every year is, is about your workforce, and how fit they are and everything. Do you have people right now that are out injured on duty?
I don't think there's anybody right now. We've had certainly some issues this year. People have went out, a couple guys, 30 days at a time. But I think right now, we're, Sergeant Hart, correct me? Is there anybody that you know?
There's no one out.
No, so we're, we're good at the moment.
Okay, because occasionally, I mean, usually every meeting, we have a couple fire department and police officers that are out on duty. And my concern is how that affects the running of the department and the overtime costs, because we're trying to keep that, that in line. So does that, if you've got two or three people out, does that really affect the running and asking more people for overtime?
Absolutely. Anytime we have less officers, it increases. We have to, we have to fill minimum manning, and keep the patrol cars rolling, and try to be as proactive as possible. So when we're down manpower, it increases. It's a balance, down manpower, overtime goes up.
And the other question I have, and a lot of times, it's hard to have a crystal ball, and you to know who's leaving the department within a year, but sick time, sick leave buyback, and, you know, like vacation buyback, a lot of employees over the years, especially the seasoned employees, have a lot of time on the books. Do you have any idea, within the next year, people retiring? And if, if this is gonna cover that, the amounts you asked for, is it gonna cover those employees?
Well, it is definitely, I, I know what you're saying, it is like a crystal ball. What the problem is, is, well, I know we have two, but I've kind of projected somewhere in the middle, we could have up to six. Guys are sometimes wishy-washy, they don't know, it's, it's, it's kind of tough to end your career, you know, and you get it at the end, and it becomes difficult, I think emotionally, for a lot of guys. So when I, I put out an email and I asked, listen, is anybody gonna, for sure, gonna retire? If you're thinking about it, let me know. I think I narrowed it down to most six, definitely two. And I, I shot to cover at least two or three in the, in the buybacks. I figure if I have to come back, then I'll come back.
Yeah, and all over the years, we've had times where, you know, we're looking at 150, 200,000 out of free cash, and considering the budget, and how right this year, you know, we're looking at very low numbers, just like last year, free cash, because of the economy, what's going on with our budget. It's just a concern I have, so whatever, you know, can be done. If, if there's possibly areas in your department, that could be some transfers made, because I don't, I don't see that we're gonna have a lot of free cash. And when somebody retires, and you're looking for 120, you know, 90,000, it's, and sometimes the money isn't there, because it's used for other things. I think that's something that we have to sort of look ahead to.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you. I think, I know we moved some money into sick buyback this year, and we always try to work within our budget. The last thing I want to do is come back, and I understand the financial position the city's in, so I don't want to come back and ask for money, I'm gonna try to live within the budget as best I can. I think I demonstrated that this year, it was, it was, we did a lot of belt tightening, probably more than ever.
Appreciate it.
Counsel Sullivan?
Thank you. Well, Chief, you've had time to prepare for my question.
Okay, what was the question again, refresh me?
The data management equipment services, since we've now got this contract with Wally, and it's supposed to do all the things before that were said, and we're up, you know, over 2018 before we had it, and it was only 47. We're still looking for 65,000 despite this new contract and this new service with Wally Computer, is that?
Well, I'll just speak for the police department. We requested, it's under repair and maintenance office, we requested 23,000. It was cut to 11. We have, I mean, I'm all for, you know, getting a Wally computer fully onboard, but we're not there yet, so I don't want to make any cuts ahead of time. But we have maintenance contracts, Microsoft Office 365, is, costs us 8,300 right there. And then we have some copier maintenance contracts that are over 2 grand. We also have, you know, some CGIS and IMC computer contracts. So until we get, until we get up and running, I mean, I'd be all for Wally, but we're not there yet.
I understand we're not there yet, but do you think we'll need, really need the full 65,000? We only expended 47,000 in 18, and we didn't have Wally around.
Okay, what line item are you looking at? Because I'm probably looking at the wrong page.
Page 19, about 1, 2, 3, 4. Yeah, it's a few down from the 23,000 that you're talking about. Data?
Data management equipment, that's 53010.
One second, while I find my notes. Yeah, okay, I have it. 65,000? Yeah, year-to-date, out of that account, we have spent 63,428. Pays for annual service plans, like the traffic speed trailer, some IT updates, our IMC computer system licenses, and for IT services. Three-year average has been 46,942.
Okay, so with Wally onboard, and now having some time coming up, do you think we could get back to that 46, three-year average?
That'd be the hope, for sure. I mean, if, if I didn't think we were needed, I certainly wouldn't be asking for it. I just know that prices are going up, they're not going down. So I just don't know how soon the plan is gonna, the contracts with Wally are gonna kick in, and be in full, full effect.
Okay. So a $20,000 cut there might not, might not kill you, though? I mean, that would get us back to the 40, in that neighborhood? 46,000?
Yeah, I mean, you, you cut it, you cut it. So I don't, I don't think it'll
We're spending 180,000 more with Wally, so I would hope they'd do something for the police and fire departments to reduce their overheads.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it's, it's the licenses with IMC and things like that. I'm not sure exactly how much those licenses are, but if we could, well, if you certainly, if you cut 20,000, I'll just make sure that I speak to the mayor, to make sure we have more representatives from Wally come over when we're stuck, I guess.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, just one, one more question. Repair and maintenance of motor vehicles, I know you asked for 60, the mayor gave you 30. Obviously, one of our thoughts when we got the new vehicles was that potential to go down, but we're also, I know the DPW is trying to get a police vehicle mechanic, and then that, to date, I don't think has changed, Mike, so. Assuming that does not happen in the immediate future?
I'm gonna go right ahead and say, I have no hope for that happening anytime in the near future. We're basically sitting here with the same conversation we were sitting here with last year. We, there's, there's no mechanic. The good part is, Mike's been great about transferring the mechanic money into our repair, maintenance, motor vehicle fund, which we needed, every bit of it, to this day. We spent 66,000, and we still have time to go in the year. Even if we get the, the six new cruisers, which I don't know how we can function without them, we're still gonna, still gonna need more than 30, because I have 45 cruisers in the background that are over 100,000 miles, and we need them. The upkeep is becoming more and more expensive. 30,000, it's definitely gonna be tough, impossible.
You did say four to five, oh, you didn't say 45 cruisers, right?
45, we have 45 police vehicles. One, they have the paddy wagon van, we have the mobile community policing truck, we have, we have six line cars, we have some unmarked detective bureau cars, we have support staff, administration cars. We have a lot of cars, but they're really, really old. And some of them truly shouldn't even, we have unmarked narcotic surveillance vehicles, and some of them shouldn't even be driven. And when I went over the paperwork this morning, 195,000 on a couple of them. So we're, we're gonna yank a bunch off the road, but we're desperate for cars.
Okay. So the expectation is, you're gonna be asking Mike to transfer some of his money through the mayor to, back to that account?
Well, we've already done that, so in this coming year
Not for next year, you haven't yet.
Well, I, I really want a police, I really want a police mechanic, but if that doesn't happen, we'll probably do the same thing, it's like half the year increments.
Thank you. I want to, one more, just want to thank you one more thing, if I can? Thank you for putting the radar near Dean, it's, it's made a difference. I'm gonna ask you if you would kindly just now transfer it to the other side?
Sure.
Because what I've seen is the people going south have slowed down, the people going north have kept going. So now, if we can reverse that, I think, and it has made a difference, believe me, I've watched, just sat there, as people coming at 45 and So now if we can reverse that, I think, and it has made a difference, believe me, I've watched, just sat there, is people coming at forty-five and fifty and see the sign and then I see them get down to like thirty-seven, thirty-eight. They're not at thirty-five, but they're a lot closer, so I appreciate that, thank you.
And then you'll see our reverse sketch.
Yeah, well, then I'll have them get two.
I, I just got a follow-up question. When we met, we did talk about the captain, so we addressed that, that's being fixed, we talked about the vehicles, that's there. One thing we did talk about is the overtime and I remember clearly you said, you know, four-fifty, I said, well, the chief said that was all right, and he said, that chief said it was all right, not me. Four-fifty wasn't good last time, now it's down to three-fifty. And I heard your numbers, twelve point three in the budget, four-fifty overtime, this year it's twelve point two, three hundred thousand, or three-fifty for overtime. So remembering that meeting, knowing that it wasn't sufficient then, being cut even more is worrisome to me. I know we get grants coming in and the grants are not in here in order to help fund the Shannon Grant, the nine-one-one, E-nine-one-one, we take that money, we apply it towards overtime. What is the projection of grants coming in to help cover the overtime for this year? Do we have any, any projections yet?
I'll let John Hart speak to that in one second, but I'll just address the, the grant itself. Like the Shannon Grant is very, very specific, we, we do targeted gang patrols, we have twenty thousand, I believe, that's for the deployments of the mobile community policing. So they, they really don't help with overtime, overtime as far as filling in the, it, it definitely puts officers out for those specific reasons on overtime. But as far as like the department overtime and filling the cruisers and, and responding to surge events, that, that's a different type of overtime. As far as the projection goes, is Sergeant Hart?
Yeah, so really the, the big lump sum that normally goes towards the overtime line item is the PSAP one. And currently we get a hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred dollars in that. And again, that is, we, we talked about this before, it can be utilized for equipment, it can be utilized for personnel and it's utilized for overtime, and that's just not police overtime, that's dispatcher's overtime, that's the clerks overtime, that's all, all people within our budget that covers the overtime in that line item.
And that's, that's my big issue, I don't mind it being used, I, we've had this discussion many times. My issue is if it goes down. I know last year it came in relatively earlier than, than I believe in the past. Do we believe it's going to be about the same or do we have a projection that might not be the same coming in?
It should be, but again, like two years ago, we didn't get it till like December. And then by the time it goes through the, the process of getting accepted and finance committee and back to the full council to, to kind of utilize it, it's kind of a push for, because it's a reimbursable grant, so we have to spend it, and we can't go back in time in July to, to use it because of the contract date, so.
So can you see where I'm going with this pattern, in a sense of, we do rely on grants for certain overtime costs. If they go down or they come in late and they're reimbursable and we can't really use them like we normally would, having less overtime and other cuts, do we have to address that now? In essence, we can't add to the budget, we know that, but are we to be proactive to help you? I do believe in that meeting, we talked about, one of the issues was we were able to take from, and correct me if I'm wrong, I might have missed it, from the patrol officers, because we didn't fully have the full staff, we took that money in order to backfill overtime. Do we have enough staff now to, where you're comfortable to provide the safety in the streets? Or we don't have that cushion anymore to, to deal with it?
Okay, yeah, it's, it's a balancing act, so the more, the more officers we have on the street, we have eight coming out of the police academy in July, the more officers that we have, the less overtime, in theory, and in, in, in practice, it should be that way. As far as three hundred and fifty thousand, i- is it, I, I mean, I don't know, I'm hoping to do the best, I mean, we shift money around, I think we have eighty-eight. So there's a little bit of wiggle room there, a little bit of money to move over, plus with some of the grants. We'll move money around, I'm not confident that we'll make the whole year, but I'm going to try, I mean, that's all I can say.
Well, and I, I appreciate that, what I'm trying to get at is, what do we need to be fully staffed, in your view, in the police department, to provide the best safety to our residents? Are we fully staffed now? I know eight are coming out of the academy, will that get us at full staff to address the needs in the community? I mean, I, you and I, I call you, I email you, whatever it is, you respond, and I'm sure you do that with everyone else here. The problem is, if you don't have the staffing, you don't have the money to cover it, the response is going to come back to me is, I can't get to it.
Right, okay, I know what you're saying, we're only down two officers right now. So we're close to being fully staffed. You know, it depends on what happens, how many, right now we have no officers out injured on duty, which is helpful, but next week, there could be five officers injured on duty. It's, it always changes, would I like more money in the budget, certainly, would I like four hundred and fifty in overtime instead of three-fifty, absolutely. It's just, it's the nature of the beast and I assure you, we are doing everything we can, more than probably any other, any other time.
No, I, I know you are, Chief, I, I'm not picking on you, I just remember our meeting and you said, you know, four-fifty is what the prior chief asked for, I would have asked for more.
Correct.
Simply because of the dynamics of what were going on, but you were able to backfill that because of people were, you weren't fully staffed yet and you just took from that line item to fill in. Well, if we're fully staffed and you're still short, you can't steal from that line item anymore.
Right, but with the, the three-fifty and the four-fifty, being that we have eight officers coming online, I'm hoping that that will kind of work itself out and iron itself out, and that between shifting some of the grant help that we get to move around, I can only tell you, we could do our best.
No, I know, I know, I just, as I pointed out before to, to you and then when we had our meeting is, if a grant comes back less than what we've normally seen, and they have gone down, the Shannon Grant went down, I think it finally went up this year. It goes down. Then we're worse off than before and that, I know it's always a guessing game, but that's one of the worries I have based on seeing the grants over the years stagger down.
Right, I will say the PSAP one's been pretty steady, so we're pretty confident that we're good to go on that, at least through the 2020 budget.
Okay.
Counselor McGivern?
Chief, in the overtime account, regular overtime account, is this used to pay police officers who do private details?
No, that's an overtime, that's paid by like, let's say Stop and Shop or the construction companies, that's a detail rate, it's a different, different than this.
And where would we find the, the money that is used to pay the, the private contractors?
Sergeant Hart, you know where that, is that, Katie have that in a?
Yeah, it's not part of our budget.
It's not part of our budget, it's like a revolving account.
Is it running a deficit? Private?
The off-duty detail, yeah, yeah.
As far as if it runs a deficit, I, I think it does from time to time and then it plays catch up as the, the bills go out and the money comes in. I know at one point it was a, a sticky subject here at the city council, because we had been, and we talked about that, we had been way behind schedule. But I think we're, we're pretty much caught up as far as all the funds that we could collect on, I know there's some, there's some money in there that's never going to be collect on, collected on whether the, the construction companies went out of business or for whatever reason, like they're not going to be collectible funds.
But the, the officers were paid for the duty.
That is correct.
Obviously, so where did the money, where, where, where does that money come from when the money's not in the private detail account?
Well, right now, we instituted a, a ten percent fee to all the vendors for all road jobs, so right now that, that deficit is slowly decreasing and I would assume probably within a year or two, we'd be back in the black.
If I could ask the treasurer on the payroll part of this, when police officers are paid for private duty, private details? Is it taken through that one account or is it ever taken through a general fund?
She has to, she has to come up, Joe.
Katie, do you ever have to reach into the general fund to pay those?
No, it, it goes through the payroll system, it's a line item called off-duty that they get paid through and the city does get reimbursed for their, from their vendors and we get the receipts.
And there's no deficit at this point?
Not at the moment, that I'm aware of, you'd have to ask the auditors, but as far as the treasurer is concerned, the, the police officers do get their money in a timely fashion.
Dr. Tanya?
So this account is still in deficit, but it's mostly from previous year's deficits. I'm not sure why at the end of each year, the city and the auditors didn't decide to put that on the tax recap and write it off, because I would think that that's what you would normally do, so we're working on that with the external auditors. They're collecting their ten percent fee, which is actually held in a separate account in the general fund that you can appropriate to pay off that deficit, so we're tracking that.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question about that? Sure, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Murphy.
So if a police officer, we won't pit stop and shop, we'll just say up in that general area, does some duty in that general area on today, does the city generate an invoice to that company and if so, when do they do it and what are the payment terms?
Yeah, I believe it's submitted, they, the officer submit a slip to Kate McCoy up in payroll and she generates it and processes it, processes it like any other invoice. It's, it's done within the pay period.
Okay.
So the officer is paid, you know, in the following two-week pay period and then, I'm not sure what goes on behind the scenes as far as collecting those funds, but that's all done.
Yeah, it would be interesting to, to, I mean, from a standpoint, especially hearing that there has been some deficits that we, as I heard, contractors that have gone out of business, it would certainly behoove us to make sure that, that payment terms are very short and that we're not having somebody out thirty days and the next thing you know, you're going to collect for the detail and the company's out of business, but.
Well, I agree.
And last question, or last, this does not get added to someone's retirement account, correct? This is just, this is an independent contract?
It's an independent, yeah.
Thank you.
There's no further questions, thank you very much. Next is the fire department? Chief, if you want to start off with any comments or anything, or, this would be page twenty, twenty-one?
Good evening, always a pleasure to be here, thank you for your time. Really no opening comments, except for the fire department has been using the reorganization plan over the last couple of years and it's working out very well at the department, we've kept our costs in line and all of the major increases this year in, in the budget are due to contractual raises. So I'm ready to begin whenever everyone else is.
Counselor McGivern?
So I see you have a five thousand dollar pay cut in this budget. Did you sign up for that?
Yeah, I believe that was addressed when we met before, when, when the transfer was going through, that, that line item had to be changed, so, yeah, unfortunately, I never put in for.
So you're going to have to chat with the mayor about that, because we can't touch it. So, just saying.
Thank you. I wish you'd called me before.
We haven't had this too long.
I know.
And my other question would be, of the eighty-two firefighters listed in the budget, how many do you have?
We currently have seventy-four firefighters.
And are there people that will be coming online within the next three months, say?
Uh, that's correct, actually, the Board of Fire Commissioners met recently, when they met the last meeting, they called for a list of eight. So during the month of June, we will start our hiring process with that and that process takes a while, because we do extensive background checks. We're hoping to have these eight firefighters online, I would say sometime in September.
That's all I have for now, thanks.
Counselor McGivern?
Chief, last year, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you implemented a new, new policy in terms of how you man apparatus, in terms of trying to, you know, I don't want to mention that word brownout and all this stuff that happened with engine tool and everything, but how, how is that working in terms of a budget point of view?
It's actually working out very well, as long as we keep our staffing as per the plan, we can kind of project out where we need to be for costs. As you know, when, when staffing goes down, it starts to take, we start to take more money from the overtime section of the budget. But with those absences in the firefighter line items or lieutenant line items, we can move money over into that overtime line item to balance it out. So the plan's actually working well, we're, we keep twenty minimum, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And each shift will range anywhere between, there's four different groups, A, B, C, and D, that rotate throughout an eight-day period. We go anywhere between, right now, one of the groups is down to twenty-two, because we're short, but we go anywhere between twenty-two to twenty-six per group and they, that's how we fluctuate the time and that group will know, they won't go below twenty, if they go below twenty, that's when we have to hire to keep it up to a minimum of twenty.
And what, what is left in the overtime account?
Make me dig through this paper. We have a couple pay periods left, but we have about sixty-five thousand in there now.
And that's out of the original three hundred thousand?
The original is three hundred thousand, two hundred and eighty-one thousand has been spent from that three hundred thousand and as discussed in the last time I was in here, we transferred fifty thousand over to cover up to the end of the year. So we should have a surplus in that line item at the end of the year.
Could you talk to the chief who was sitting in that chair a minute ago? About how to control overtime costs, because, I mean, this, this is the most remarkable overtime control I've seen from the fire department.
Thank you.
In a long time, Counselor Murphy. And I, I, I know there were some concerns about the, the change of, of how you use manpower and apparatus, but it's incredible what a difference it makes and kudos, I guess is how you say it, but good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Chief. For line item five-one-four-six-oh, acting out of grade, we're, could you, same deal, could you tell us where we're at right now, year-to-date on that?
Uh, I do not have that, that amount with me. And I'm not going to shoot from the hip to tell you, but we did, I don't believe we expended that thirty, that amount that was budgeted for last year, thirty-five thousand. And that's, that's because we've been keeping our officers to the amount they're supposed to be, which cuts back on acting out of grade.
No, and I commend the department on that, I'm just, the reason I'm asking is I see ten thousand halfway through the year, which is great, if it followed that trend, we'd be at twenty thousand or somewhere in that neighborhood at the end of the year, we can, we can get that number in the next couple of days, I guess.
I, I mean, if I were to shoot from the hip or project, I would say twenty-five thousand probably a fair amount to have in that account.
Oh, you'll save me the research and we'll agree to that ahead of time?
Yeah, I'll agree to it now, yes, go ahead and cut ten. I won't kick.
All right, information technologies? All right. Information Technologies, I don't know if you were here when I... We've got this great new contract with Wally, and they're doing all this things that include the police and fire departments. Is there some savings that Wally's gonna bring out of that, this piece?
I won't speak for the police department, but it's along the same lines. For the fire department, the amount that's in there is for user fees, internet access for fire apparatus, iPads, laptops, cell phones. It also pays for our IMC account for dispatching. It pays for our emergency reporting system, which covers all the digital paperwork that we use for bookkeeping, for fire inspections, training, daily rosters. Everything's covered under that. So, there's no manual labor in that line item. That is just to pay for all those services to keep that information contained and up to speed.
And none of those are any services that'll be taken over by Wally, or reduced costs or anything through savings, or?
No. A prime example for Wally would be network. They take care of our network. Last year, I know there was a big to-do about, there was a big bill out there. One of the things were our backup hard drive on our IMC software went down, which basically holds records over the last 20 years for the fire department for all dispatching incidents. That went down. We had nobody to take care of that, because we have no network supervisor to come in and take care of it. So, Wally Computer was hired to do things like that, to take care of the network. I know for a fact, the police department has an extensive network, and it has to be very secure. Same as us, theirs is more high-tech. We take care of a lot of our own stuff.
Got, got, got it. All right. Line item 53210 is medical. We had 10,000 in there last year. What is that line item for, medical?
That medical is for medical evaluations for new firefighters. An average evaluation for a physical for a new firefighter coming in is anywhere from 800 to $1,000. And we anticipate putting on 10, and also, that also covers any drug testing for those new hires.
Did we have any new hires last year?
I don't believe we had new hires last year. I would say the bulk of that money that was moved around or whatnot has been moved around, I should say. This year, contractually, we have to pay EMT stipends, and there's a whole bunch of other items that had to be moved around in here, contractually. But we will be using that money for the eight new hires this year.
I was just curious, because it's still at the 415, 9,585 was transferred out of that account.
There's more than 415 expended. Is that the line item you're looking at? I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there's more than that.
What would the, with the new hires you'll have this year?
That will definitely exhaust that account.
Okay, and... I think that was it for me.
Thank you.
Counsel Murphy.
So, Chief, let me just go down. Captains, you do have nine?
Yes, sir.
Any retirements coming, or no?
Specifically for captains?
Yes.
Not that I know of.
Okay. Lieutenants, you have currently 22?
Yes, sir.
He didn't ask the chief, is he gonna retire?
He's a young guy.
Yeah, but we still should ask.
Oh, Chief, are you retiring?
He had jet black hair when he started though.
He skipped right by me. What was the question again?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Chief, are you retiring?
I am contemplating retiring in January.
January of what?
2020.
Right, then, you got the secret. You knew that, didn't you?
The word's on the street. It's not official yet.
I don't hang out in the street. I got enough problems. Okay, so you do have 22 lieutenants currently on duty, so we're not looking to hire any more lieutenants?
No, sir.
No expected retirements that you know of?
No, sir.
Okay. And the only, I mean, I know you said these are contractual things. The only contractual raises that kind of, kind of startled me a little bit was the deputy chiefs. That's a pretty, it's like $88,000 for the six of them, so my math skills are not that quick, but it's like 15,000 apiece? Is that 14,000?
I don't believe that line item was correct. I think the number that should have been in there was 543,000, and then after contractual raises, it would go to 585,000.
So, you think last year's budgeting item should have been 543?
Yes. If you look in 2018, expended amount was 498,504. I think that's the number that was transferred over. It should be 543,147.
Excuse me for interrupting, but we do have an MOU coming in on Tuesday. We got the email today with, I mean, looking at their 1%, or 1.5% increases, but they're new from the, they're new for the ongoing, you know, future.
So, in reality, though, we're talking 42,000 for this fiscal year increase, if you're back at 543 for last year. It's not, it's not gonna be an 88,000?
I'm not gonna project that out for you.
Well, if it was, if it really should have been 543 for fiscal '19, then it is only 42, which is a lot more reasonable with six duties than 8,000. Couple other, and I, Mike already asked the acting out of grade, which I agree with. In energy, oil and gas, or oil, electric, and was that... My question relates to, would we be in a position, and this probably relates to Mike as well, if, would we be in a position to reduce that figure if we get the repairs done at Highland and West Hoyle stations? Would that reduce the energy cost? I mean, I know the, I mean, I recall when we went, walked through the Highland Station, there was certainly not great air quality and things leaking and things along that line. So, I'm just wondering, I know we're looking at trying to get repairs done there. If we were to get the repairs done, obviously, it would be better for the firefighters who are working there and hopefully not having to risk any other health issues, but I'm just, I'm assuming that if we did that and we sealed up the building, we would also be in a position to potentially save on energy costs?
I would hope so. That's gonna take some time and money to get that upgrade done at Station 3. But at this point in time, I was given 90,000 in that line item. And I, 100,000, we've already exceeded 100,000 this year in that line item. So, we are already a shortfall. With the revenue that we're receiving now from the lease of the stations, I plan on making some upgrades at Station 3, which will hopefully coincide and cut back that. One of the, one of the things I was looking at as a projected project up there is to change all the lighting over to LED, high-efficient LED. And as far as the heating system, I could work with Mike and see what we can do with that.
Yeah, again, I just, you know, the quirk of we can get that work done, it would seem to me they're better off, both the firefighters are, but we're also gonna not waste money going in and out the door, or out the ceiling, or the roof, whatever the case might be.
That's correct. I did already get three, I got three quotes going for the roof, so...
Okay, good.
Project's underway.
That's good. And I'd like, keep me posted on that, because you know, I've been advocating for it. Repair and maintenance of motor vehicles, and I know you got 50,000 last year, you're getting 50,000 from the mayor this year. I know you already spent more than that halfway through the year. You spent way more than that, but with the new vehicles that, have they come in already?
We have, Truck 1 has come in, but we're still waiting on Engine 5 and Truck 2. Those should be in December, January, February, in that time period. So, we still have to go halfway through the year, and then, when they do come in, we still have to train on them before we actually put them in service. So, you're looking at maybe March before we're actually using those vehicles.
Okay. Because I was thinking, new vehicles, we probably would have less maintenance.
I would, I would, I mean, I would say next year, you may be able to cut that back a little bit. But for the time being, we're still trying to maintain the vehicles that we have, and our 2000, the KMEs, believe it or not, are 2014, so they're already five years old. So, now, some of the warranty items that were on those vehicles, we're gonna have to start taking care of. And to go off topic, if you don't mind, we do have an emergency vehicle technician now working on our vehicles, and I can tell you, it's made a world of difference. So, once we go this one full budget cycle, it'll be easier for us to figure out what number we need to work. But he's doing a great job, and you won't believe how much work he's been doing on some of these vehicles. It's really, it's really amazing. So, thank you all for getting that done.
Now, it would be interesting to get a maintenance cost by apparatus. That would be interesting. And with the year and the apparatus, and what it costs, and what it costs to get, and what the savings would be, so.
Right, and that's part of that, the software, is there's a portion in there where you put in work orders. So, what we're trying to do is, any work order that goes in, we're trying to put the price of the parts that are replaced it in an estimated cost, so then we'll kind of give you projections going forward on what it's really cost.
Okay. Two more, two more things. The education and training, asking for 15, the mayor gave it to you. Last year, he had seven. Two years ago, it was under 4,000. And I know when we were having the meeting in ordinance committee, and the captain was in here talking about, you know, the need to get more training
Right.
for those people that were doing inspections of the buildings. But I'm wondering, and I certainly want people to be well-qualified to do what they're doing, but I'm wondering if that's an area where we could make some reduction and still provide more money to increase training, but again, recognizing that our economic reality is we've got a very tight financial situation.
Well, that's a great question. On this line item in particular, this covers first aid CPR training for the whole department. They charge us per card, now I believe it's 10 or 15 dollars a person per card, plus we gotta do all the training. And now, within this line item is every two years, EMTs have to be recertified, and the city is gonna reimburse them up to $150 every two years. We've had a huge influx of people, because the contract went back to like 2016. So, we've had a huge influx of people coming in, getting their $150 over the last couple of years, so... This is why this line item is inflated, because we project that half of the department's gonna need the 150 for that EMT stipend that comes out of that line item.
Okay, so you're talking like 50, 50 firefighters getting EMT training?
Yeah. Well, they get training, but it's the recertification fee.
And the fire academy cost, is that because of the new recruits?
That's the new recruits, correct.
And what does it cost to go to the fire academy, do you?
It's, it's, the cost of, to go to the fire academy is free, but the cost for equipment to go there, like turnout gear and whatnot, is all included in that portion.
Okay. And I think that pretty much covered me.
All right. Counsel, Counsel Tomlin?
Thanks, Chief, for coming down, and I don't know if I'm gonna let you retire. Well, think about it, okay? Armory Strong, right?
Yes.
I'm looking at the same question I asked for the fire chief. Do you have people out injured on duty right now? The numbers approximately?
We currently have two out injured on duty.
Are they long-term, or is it short-term? Is it anybody that may be out, possibly retired with an injury?
None that far. One could be out six to eight months, and the other one that's out injured on duty is actually moved over to light duty, working in the office, doing administrative work, right?
Okay. And the same question I asked the chief, vacation and sick leave buyback, do you have any ideas, other than your own retirement, other people retiring in your department? It seems like it was cut quite a bit. You asked for 600,000 and 500,000.
I'm gonna say I'm gonna have to come back for more money on those line items. Based on the fact that in those line items, firefighters can now sell back up to 10 vacation days, and that comes out of that line item. So, we did a quick projection on that, and just that alone, with the amount of days that people have, let me go back to beginning. We put out a sheet to find out how many days they anticipate they want to sell back. We got all the sheets, we figured out the amounts, and it came up to about 180,000 just for that. So, that's without buybacks for retirement or other items. So, just that one line item alone is gonna be that amount.
Is that something new recently in the contract that was?
Yes.
Yeah.
And these are, and, you know, it's a moving target, and it's, it's a difficult job trying to figure out exactly what these are, so I appreciate everyone working with us on this. But in essence, if people can sell back more vacation time, they won't take vacation, which will save overtime, see? So, there's...
You know, ways of savings.
We really don't have a, we can't figure those numbers out until it starts going, we can actually get a read on them. So, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and there's a lot of projections. I did ask for that amount to ensure we had enough money to cover all the contractual obligations and the projected retirements for both of those line items. And the mayor was gracious enough to give me an extra 25,000 in each line item over last year. So, I may have to come back for money in those line items.
No, when you're coming back, you're talking about what, like next year, like in January, or maybe sooner? Or the end of fiscal, this year?
I would, I would say around January is probably good.
So, when employees, let's say somebody has 20 days vacation on the books, so they want to sell back 10 days?
Yes.
So, they get paid for those 10 days, whatever their salary is for that day, and do they do that at the end of the year?
Yes, they get paid out in December out of this line item.
Okay, so you could have 25 employees saying, "I got 10 days, and where's my cash?"
I could, but I know it's gonna be 180,000, max.
How much, the max?
Max now, because we figured that out. We had them tell us how many days they have to, they're gonna sell back.
Right. And what does that, what line does that come out of? Will that come out of?
Vacation personal, vacation buyback, right.
Okay. So, now, what, my thought is, what, with that coming out of there already, and with the amount you have in there, next year, you got a few retirements. What, you gotta plan to take some money from somewhere else to get that, other than getting free cash?
Correct. We look within the personnel line items to see if we can move any money around to fill those gaps, which we've did, we did this whole year. Yes.
Because, I mean, thinking that you're gonna hire, you know, you have some retirements, but you're gonna hire eight firefighters, hopefully by, you said, September?
Correct.
Who'll be on duty. So, your complement will be a total, what, number of how many firefighters?
Eighty-two.
So, that'll be the full?
Total department, or just firefighters?
Firefighters. Eighty-two?
Eighty-two.
Okay. Right now, what do you have a total number?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
As of right now?
Yes.
And out of that 74, you have two that are injured, one possibly six to eight months?
Correct. So, they're not worked, they're not in the rotation. We also have two on military.
Okay.
Military duty.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Bacon?
I'm all set, thanks.
Any other questions for the chief?
Oh, wait, I do have one question. I take that back. So, on the buyback, is there a point in time in the year where folks let you know what they want to buy back? They have like a window, they let you know, and then, if they don't, you're off the hook till the next year?
Correct. I believe in the contract, they have until... The way we did the last contract, I wanted to make sure we could at least project these numbers out. So, they have to let me know by January 15th.
For the next year?
So, we give each group sheets, they go through, and they tell us how, and then they sign, yes, I'm gonna sell back 10, I'm gonna sell back three, you know. So, we get those sheets, and we know.
All right.
If they decide not to sell days back based on an emergency or whatnot, they'll let me know by, I believe, November. So, at least, we know. Yes, and it really works out well. It's a, it's a good thing to have.
That's what I have where I work, so, yeah. Thanks.
All right, so if there's no more questions for the chief, as Joe breaks stuff. It's all good. Thank you, Chief, for coming in.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go right down to the next guest. That would be DPW.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
Good evening, sir, how are you?
I am well, and yourself?
Well, thank you. You have any opening information or comments, or?
Uh, no, just this budget is tight. We are looking to add two positions, as Councilor Bartley had pointed out earlier, they're within the parking facilities. It's offset by the decrease in the contract services with the city taking over parking management. And it was an extra an extra Dan Augusto and a part-time clerk to help out with the paperwork associated with not only the parking management, but also the sewer shut-offs and everything else that DPW has taken on in the last few years. It's increased the amount of visits and calls down at DPW.
With that, questions, Councilor Bacon?
Thanks for coming down, Mike, and thanks for waiting. You seem to do that a lot. My question is, getting back to part of the conversation we had with the mayor about the parking garages, and I think I'm pretty warm to what you're doing, but we never got a clear answer on whether any of those machines for the ticketing in the garages were working at any part of this year. And you may recall that there was a lot of revenue projected from there, and then we heard everything was broken. You know, and then it was all the back and forth with the contract, et cetera. Do you know if anything was working in that regard at all this year?
So, right now, at the Prue Garage, we just installed new equipment. It's being tested now, it'll probably be live in the next two weeks. And that equipment will allow us to do both monthly and transient or temporary parking in the garage. Previously to that, we were only able to do monthly parking
Right.
at that garage, so we were losing out potentially on some transient revenue. However, if you look historically at the transient revenue at the Prue Garage, it never really was that much money to begin with. The bulk of the money from that garage came from the monthly leaseholders of the spaces.
And so, I know there were a lot of issues with vandalism, and so the equipment would be there, and then it would be destroyed. I mean, do we have any hope that this different equipment is gonna be less vulnerable, or?
We do, in a sense that it's going to be a cashless system. So, while there will be opportunities for transient parking, it'll be through credit card transactions or the Park Mobile.
Okay, so there'll be less incentive?
Correct, there'll be no, no money for anybody to steal at the equipment.
Was the motivation?
That was the motivation for the vandalism, and we decided to replace the equipment because the repairs for that equipment was more expensive than what this new equipment cost was.
Sounds like a positive development.
Hopefully.
Thanks, well, yeah.
And then at the top-of-year garage, the same equipment was there, and it was also vandalized. So, what we did was, we relocated some equipment that was outside of the bus terminal to the top-of-year, the upper deck. So, that is live for transient parking and also monthly parking. The monthly parking is through window, window hangers on the rearview mirrors. So, that's how we keep track of either have a pay and display ticket that you get from the machine
Okay.
that says you've paid for parking through this amount of time, or you have a monthly rearview mirror hangar. And you'll also be able to pay with the Park Mobile on the upper deck. So, there'll be, you know, many options for for payment.
And again, that will be less, people won't be looking, because of the way the payment is made, they won't be, again, as vulnerable to being
Right, so the, the new machine that's, that we relocated over there, it does accept cash. We empty it frequently. And it has a vandalism alarm. So, if you, if you shake it too much, an audible alarm goes off to alert anybody nearby.
So, are you thinking that you're gonna work with that as long as the life of it is there, and then switch it over like the other one?
Yes.
Down the road?
Yes.
All right, well, hey, that's progress, 'cause I don't know how many years we've been talking about this, so it's like, yay.
And the Park Mobile, it's, it's an app-based payment where you can use your phone or a credit card to make a payment at any of the on-street parking meters?
Yes, and the mayor was talking about the meters, but I wasn't sure if it translated into the garages, but, thank you.
It's both, and it's a way that we're able to modernize our on-street parking without buying new infrastructure, because the cost of the new infrastructure is crazy. And it doesn't really justify it based on the revenue that we get. So, this is an option that allows us to modernize without incurring any capital costs.
Great.
The Park Mobile, it also, it integrates with the new parking enforcement equipment that Dan has. So, before, he had a ticket book that he would use to write tickets. Now, he has a handheld device where he can scan the license plate and the registration sticker. And based on that, it will, you know, it'll check with the Park Mobile system to see if this car is paid through Park Mobile, and if it hasn't, he can issue a ticket. And it also allows him to take pictures, have the pictures sync with the ticket, and it's cutting down on the disputes that we have for parking.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Murphy?
Thank you, Mike. Department of Forestry is also you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let me, let me start on that page, page twenty-six. And I think I'm correct, so a tree climber you're trying to hire?
Correct.
And so, this past year, we've had to go to contracting forestry services because we didn't have a tree climber, and there were a number of trees that we needed to be climbing.
Correct.
So, have we hired, do we know we've got someone coming on board, or?
No, we don't, and the last I checked with personnel, we do not have any, any prospects, any viable applicants.
So, and I know you did, and I appreciate, I know on South Summer Street and a few of the streets where I had trees literally going into the people's apartment windows. I know that you had that, my thing was the contracted services to come and clear those out, and I had a huge tree that was ready to fall on an apartment building that you took down. What, do we pay a contract forestry service by an hour, by the tree? How do we determine how much they get?
I believe it's per day.
Per day?
We have a contract rate per day.
Do you know what that is?
I I don't, I should. It's roughly ten thousand dollars a week.
So, two thousand a day, approximately?
Give or take.
And so, this past year, you probably have had to use them three or four weeks then?
We had, we've had them early on in the fiscal year, and then we're gonna get them back in again.
So, is it likely that we're gonna? Certainly not likely we're gonna have a tree climber in July?
Correct, we would like to hire a tree climber. The feeling is that this position is in one of the labor unions, it's at a certain grade, and at that grade, the pay isn't worth someone coming from the private side onto onto the city side that has the qualifications that we're asking for, that we're seeking. So, if, if we wanted to pay somebody to be a tree climber, we, at this rate, we would need to significantly lower the qualifications, or we would need to increase the salary.
Okay. If I can go to page thirty. Can you just, and the safety inspector, which line, five-one-one-zero-eight object code. I mean, we, that person is going, and it's one person, correct?
Correct.
And they've gone from thirty thousand to forty-three thousand to fifty thousand, so that's a twenty thousand dollar raise in two years.
So, it was an existing position. And at the beginning of fiscal year eighteen, the person who was in that position left. And then it was unfilled for a period of time before we could hire somebody to come in, and that's why it's it was thirty thousand in fiscal year eighteen. Again, this is a union position, so there's steps as, as the person is been at the position for. This will be going on two years now.
And, but for this fiscal year, they, they were paid forty-three thousand, so it would seem unlikely that a step would take them
For a seven thousand dollar raise.
I know, I mean, it just seems to me from forty-three thousand, and I hear what you're saying, that you've gotten someone new in there, and they're at that particular thing, but so from forty-three thousand to fifty thousand, that's a pretty, you know, eighteen percent raise.
But it's all within that grade.
Well, it's all within that grade, the step's in that grade, but, so that step is a seven thousand dollar raise?
Well, then, so the, the grade has a range.
Yeah.
And then there's steps within the range. So, what this, what this one is, is he's he's going up a step, but we're also shifting him out on the range as well. So, before, he was at the low end of the range, and now that he's been there, that we've seen what he can do, he's got the step, and he's moving further out on the range.
So, so we're choosing to give him seven thousand rather than, are we required to give him seven thousand?
Could say that, yeah.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Can I just ask what the safety inspector does?
So, he he does accident reports whenever DPW people are involved in an accident. He ensures compliance with all of our buildings and vehicles and work practices in accordance with OSHA standards. He looks for grants, he administers training for the personnel. Both, there's been a couple day-long trainings, he does tailgate talks. It's, you know, it's a risk management type thing, where we try to have the guys work safer so that they don't get into, into accidents where they don't hurt themselves.
Okay. You want to say that?
Yeah.
Okay. On page thirty-one, the repair and maintenance of City Hall, it's forty thousand, but I'm gonna ask a psychological question. Where, where does the repair and maintenance of the parking for City Hall come?
That's a capital project. So, I mean, the repair and maintenance for the parking that we've done in the past has been pothole filling. But we need to really fix the parking here. And that's a a much larger project, it's not in the forty thousand dollars.
So?
And then, so the, you know, the thing that we've been thinking about lately with the parking is to demolish the old police station and put in an actual lot.
Like a little deck or something, or just a lot?
Just a lot, just an asphalt lot. We might be able to get more parking spaces in, since we don't have that middle atrium. And we could have it. It would, it would look a lot better, it would, it would function better. There would be some design work that would need to be done because there believe that there's a physical connection between the old police department and City Hall itself, so that when we demolished the building, we would have to make sure that we don't cause any movement in City Hall. But there's also the thought that a lot of that demo work could be done with in-house personnel and expertise. So, there's gonna be a cost, but we think that we can save on some of that cost as well.
What, and I know it's early in the process, but what do you think the potential cost of demolition and then repaving and creating a parking lot would be? And I brought up the psychological part because anybody that comes to park here's got to say, oh, man, what's wrong here?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, that's all?
That's all.
I could write you a check. Okay, a couple more questions, and then, again, I have. So, under page thirty-three, repairs, maintenance, streets and fixtures, are we talking sidewalks and roads, or what are we talking there?
Streets and fixtures, this is mostly roads, signs, berms.
So, this is paving roads and refurbishing roads?
Yeah. And sidewalks would fall into this.
Are potholes in that, too?
Yeah.
Potholes are in that.
Okay, and another question would be the Roca services. And, and we have a twenty-five thousand dollar increase on that. I know we spent thirty-seven thousand, but two years ago, we spent thirty-three. And I'm certainly all for trying to provide opportunities. One of the questions someone did ask me was, as you know, could I find out how many of the Roca people or Hoyo people that were trying to help go, and I, and I don't need you to give me that answer now, 'cause we go
And I can't, I don't know that answer right now.
But, but it just seems like a pretty substantial increase, twenty-five thousand, specifically for Roca. And I'll stop there, other than saying, you know, potholes are a major issue. Sidewalks are a major issue, and and I'm, if I had to look at, and I know I've got an order in that we're gonna meet to discuss potholes, 'cause what, do we have just one vehicle to the one we were trying to refurbish the pothole and put the steam and all, is that just one?
We have two.
Two? And how, and how many people in the crew work on potholes?
Three to four.
Okay, and so is it, that's not their only job, obviously?
Correct.
So, is it, what does it cost for one of those vehicles, if you don't mind my asking?
I would
Any idea?
I would guess around fifty to sixty thousand.
Okay. So, when you take people doing potholes, I'm assuming they're coming from other functions in the department?
Well, they just wouldn't be performing other functions that day.
Okay, but they, but in effect, they would, so we could
So, the, the same guys that fill the potholes are the guys who have been setting up for the festival this weekend. They're the guys who mow out in the country and clear the brush from the right of way. They're, they're the guys who put the stop logs in for the flood control when, when we need to do that, or
So, there are multiple, multiple functions?
Correct, yeah.
And again, I would, and this is certainly in my belief, only because of the complaints I get, and plus of the driving I do, I just really encourage you to, while trying to do as much as you can on those other functions, emphasize the pothole function, and again, I would like to know what the cost of a new so that we can double the percentage of service, if we went from three vehicles to four, two, from two vehicles to three vehicles, would we be able to speed up the process by fifty percent?
I would say no. We don't have enough guys to man that third vehicle. There have been times where we have both There have been times where we have both, uh, we have one vehicle waiting to be used because we just don't have enough people to, to man that second.
How many, how many total people do all of those various functions that we're talking about?
How many people do we have in, uh,
You know, that you're able to.
So in that department, in highways and bridges, uh, there's, there's seventeen. Seventeen employees.
Okay.
But with those seventeen, uh, one, one person runs the litter back, one person's at the yard waste. Two people are at the bays down at sixty-three Canal Street. Two people are generally assigned to signs or painting road lines, uh, when, when the weather's better. Uh, one person is usually assigned for building maintenance type work. So on any given day of those, uh, you know, seventeen guys, we've got seven guys that are already, um, assigned a job. Then, uh, you start to look into vacation, right, and these guys are the more senior guys, so they have more time. So, uh, on average, I've got two guys out every day. So that gets us down to, that's nine guys, so I've got eight guys left. We also have trash, and.
No, I, I'm, I under, I understa, and I appreciate.
So trash is, is important, and we don't wanna get behind on trash, we don't wanna get too far behind on, on recycling or yard waste, uh, so what happens is when guys on trash, we have a, you know, a minimum of four trash trucks and two recycling trucks that we try to staff every day. When there's not enough trash guys to fill all those seats, we take guys from Highway and put them over there. So then, with our, our eight guys that we have available, some, some days we might only have six, some days we only have five guys available. So it, it makes it difficult to always have two hot boxes, which we use for, for hatching, running, and I really, I don't think that we would be able to have three running
Okay.
without some extra guys. There are times on trash where we have more than enough staff, and we send some of the trash guys over to Highway to fill in for, for Highway functions.
Yeah, I would just encourage whenever possible, because, I mean, clearly, we are, we are so far, we are so far in, in, I mean, I, literally, there, I, I've seen in, in just South, South Hoyo, and I've had people complaining to me, literally, they're probably I'm gonna say at least a foot deep, and probably, uh, vest, a desk wide, and on Race Street, there are, and I just sent you an email about it, I think. But on Race Street, it is, from Sergeant to Appleton Street, I would venture, there are several hundred significant potholes. And, and those businesses that are there, if they are trying to get customers, they're certainly being deprived of that particular, because you basically are doing the entire street in a slow, of course, thank you.
What if, what if the ward counselor volunteered to fill potholes?
There you go.
Just anyway, council vacant.
I just wanna circle back a bit to the risk management question, 'cause, you know, I hear what you're saying about prevention, but did we have some issues in the department where we got fined, so you were looking to correct something? Or is this something you're doing, I, I hear the prevention part that you talked about?
Yeah, and it, so I think it's, it's more of a historical thing, uh, with DPW, I, I hear stories that the guys used to lift, uh, you know, fifty gallon drums of trash from the basements of blocks, where they'd, they'd bring the trash up in the alley and, and throw it, and, and they would, you know, kill themselves doing this work. So the department has taken steps to try to minimize that risk of, uh, injury and disability. There are people who are on long-term disability, um, who've been there for, for a while, from, from before my time. With the, the refuse guys, they, uh, they are more prone to be injured on the job. Uh, so when, you know, when they're out, that's another body that's gone.
Right, so I was wondering, do you have people that are out injured now?
There's one person, one person who is, uh, on workman's comp.
And is that the long-term one?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, the other people, they're out on long-term disability as permanent?
Correct. And we don't account for them, they're not, they're not in this, this list.
All right, um, I was just wondering if there was a cost benefit to justify the, the big increase that Council Murphy spoke to, you know, if there was, you know, something you could point to.
I haven't, I haven't looked at the numbers to see if there has been a reduction in workman's comp, but.
All right, well, thanks, that might be helpful.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, the, the first one I've got is, um, I know it's not really your department, we have energy expenses, streetlights. And I, I went through this last year and didn't get much traction, but I'd like to revisit it with everybody. So far this year, we've spent a hundred seventy thousand dollars on streetlights. This would incorporate the shortest days of the year, as well as the longest day of the year, or close to.
What page, Mike?
Okay, so we're on page thirty-one. Line item five-two-one-zero-zero. All right, and we already know that that's an arbitrary figure, I believe, all right, they said, they do send a bill, but we, we're dealing with this rounded number, four hundred thousand. We had cut that last year, I, I believe we did, all right, uh, I know I, I tried a couple of times, you had a significant cut in it. But we had three fifty, budgeted last year, tracking right now to do three forty. Requested was four hundred, the mayor's knocked it to three sixty. So the situation we have here is with gas and electric pays the city every year a pilot, that pilot hasn't been renegotiated in over ten years. They're still at the same number on that pilot as they were ten years ago. The projected profit this year for the gas and electric is two million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars. Why, why would we, you know, three sixty, four hundred, where, where does the number for the budget come from, and how, is this just a?
So, so my number came from, uh, the average of the last five years, that's where the four hundred, um, as of today.
And what I was told last year was they were just completing the process of installing all these new energy-saving lights, and the cost of that was being spread out over several years also now to make up for the cost of installing those energy-saving lights, all right, which allows Hoyo Gas Electric to put more power up on the grid for sale. So what, what would happen if we only paid Hoyo Gas Electric three hundred thousand dollars? We just arbitrarily cut that. Now, one time it was told me, well, they'd shut off the streetlights. I've, I've looked around, and I haven't seen a shut-off switch anywhere in the city for the streetlights, I know there is for my house, I know there is for businesses, I know there is one for City Hall, I don't think there's any switch you can throw to turn off the streetlights, is there?
Yeah.
There is?
There is, there's disconnect switches.
Multiple disconnect switches.
Multiple.
All over the place.
Correct.
What it says, Mike.
Probably hundreds of them, right?
In the eighties, we shut off every other streetlight when we had a fiscal crisis.
Okay, well, with, with the G and E not having negotiated a new pilot in over ten years, showing a profit right here in this budget of two point six million, I, I think a substantial cutter, uh, concession should be, should be looked at here. And I don't, I don't know if that's within your realm to go after them, or if it's something else we should do, like we did last year. It kinda came back to haunt us a little bit, but with, uh, with the, um, animal control, but cut it for now and make them come back in and, and justify the numbers to us later in the year.
It's not within my, my realm. It would be the mayor's solicitor.
All right, so I think I made my point on that one.
And so as of today, we've spent three hundred and fifty thousand for this line item for streetlights.
Three hundred fifty thousand on the nose?
Three hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred twelve.
Okay, thanks. Page thirty-three, s- snow removal, where do we, where do we stand on that right now? That's pretty well over, is there money left in the account still, or did we exceed it?
We exceeded, uh, both the snow removal overtime and the, uh, snow removal services, I don't have the snow removal overtime number with me, uh, but for snow removal services, we spent four hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred eight dollars. Uh, I think with the overtime, I think we're in the seventy thousand dollar ballpark.
All right, so there's.
You had a hundred twenty in there, right?
Did we? Oh, over, correct.
Over by how much?
Seventy-ish.
So where are you going with that into next year?
No, I, I think, uh, because the snow was done, uh, we'd given the, the auditor the, the numbers. I thought you balanced that, that deficit.
It takes a while by us.
Hasn't come to us.
Okay.
Takes a while by us to carry it over to next year. We'd take a while by us to transfer money in.
So it looks like we're looking like a million dollars.
Anything else, Mike?
Nope, that was it for me.
All right, if there's no other questions, uh. Sure, that's my given.
I think you may have said, I, I may have missed it, Mike, on the, the parking, new contract, new, new, uh, parking, uh, contracts and, and services, what, what's the status of our parking meters?
So the, uh, parking meters, uh, we're, we're keeping our existing, um, parking meter infrastructure, and as Mayor Morris had said, we're adding Park Mobile to the city, Park Mobile provides for app-based or credit card payment, uh, and you can do that at uh, the on-street meters without changing any of the, the existing infrastructure.
But the, the last tally were of our, our inventory, there were quite a bit of parking meters that were out of service.
Right, and, you know, the, the service area has shrunk over time. We, uh, we do have some mechanisms that we've replaced within the existing housing.
The stuff we bought from Boston?
The stuff we bought from Boston, uh, we, we had that reprogrammed so that it, it uses our rates. So we, we've repaired the, you know, the existing parking meters that were out there, so that they're functioning.
Thank you.
Uh, and then with the garages, uh, in the next two weeks or so, we should have the, uh, the pre-garage, uh, online with the new parking equipment that would allow for transient parking, which we didn't have before. And over at the, uh, the top here, parking garage on the upper deck, we have equipment that'll, uh, allows for transient parking, you can also use, uh, Park Mobile there. And, uh, we have a system for monthly parkers on the upper deck.
I, I caught that part, but, yep, thank you.
The waste yard, or yard waste, however we define it, is that being cleared out, or I know there was an email that a machine broke down or something, or what was wrong there, why?
So we, uh, subcontract removal services from the yard waste facility, um, and uh, it's, it's expensive, it's sixty, sixty bucks a ton, pretty much, to, to move the material out. Uh, at the beginning of last fiscal year, we moved a lot out, and over the, the calendar year, we filled it back up, so before we opened it this season, um, there was a transfer to put some money in so that we could have material removed to make enough room to get us through this fiscal year, and at the beginning of next fiscal year, we'll have a new budget where we can remove more material.
Okay.
But it is expensive, and it's, uh, it's something that we're gonna be fighting with. Just to try to control costs and.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, eh, thank you, if there's no other questions, next would be the auditor, and then we have the assessor and treasurer. If all three wanna come in, we'll do the time. The auditor's pretty much been, well, actually, all three of you have, Tony came in earlier to start, so.
Try to get the early bird, dear.
Counselor McGivern?
Can we, um, and it's in the recap sheet, the new growth is being estimated at five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
At sat, Tony?
Well, I mean, we had last year, we estimated like three seventy-five last year, and then we had so much from single families, so we expect some more, but, you know, I, one year I estimated a figure, and I got blamed for stuff, so I just estimate low, so, so I don't get blamed anymore.
How low have you estimated?
Three seventy-five.
We could expect a little bit more?
Um, I, well, I, it's at five hundred right now, I expect us to reach that, so I don't think there'll be a problem with the five hundred. We have other factors that, you know, we're in talks with a few businesses right now, but, you know, commercially, we have a, a few projects coming online. And also, this, like I said before, the single families are going up again, also two and three families.
Tony, you gave us a list of the, uh, it looked like tax-exempt properties, which seems to grow every time we get a copy of the list.
Yeah.
One significant, uh, shelter program run by C H D has about fifty-five units on Oak, Sergeant, and Beach Street. Do they, does that property pay tax?
C H D on Sergeant and Beach. C H D.
Starts at two eighty Oak Street, two eighty-eight goes right around onto Sergeant Street, and then the Beach Street is the old Oakwood.
Oh, that's the Center for Human Development.
C H D, yeah.
Yeah.
They pay taxes?
Nah, not that I'm aware of it, I don't think they pay taxes, so.
Do you, that, and, and I know this from a different hat that I wear, that, that is a, a state contract, and when there's available housing, people come in from Boston on a regular basis?
I know the, I know they're exempt, because we do exempt their excise bills also for their.
It, it's mind-boggling.
Yeah.
You know, our, our tax scheme is dictated by the state, and they dump program after program after program on the city, whether it be, you know, halfway houses, or, and all, all good programs, don't get me wrong, but they take away and take away from our, our tax base.
Well, you, you've seen the list, I mean, we're close to a half a billion dollars in exempt properties, but that's everything, you know, that's the college, that's the schools, that's churches, that's the whole gambit, so.
Churches have, you know, never, you know, been asked to pay property tax, which is, which is fine. But this, this is different, you know, this is people who are, are using the services within the city, police departments are responding, fire departments are responding, that shelter has four units at two eighty Oak Street. There was one, a major drug-dealing bust last year at that same address, and was taking place in the backyard of the C H D shelter. And we don't get property tax. The Wang, the old Wang Building that was projected back when Terry Murphy had, uh, like, Terry, Terry just still has his hair, back when Joe McGivern had his hair, the Wang property was supposed to save the city. was supposed to save the city when, uh, Dr. Wang was gonna build the, uh, the, did build. What's the status of that for taxes?
That's Bay State Health System.
Bay State, no taxes?
No taxes.
How many vehicles do they house up there, and do we get excise taxes from them?
Um, we don't.
They have couriers that go from, from hospital to hospital, from city to city, and that car is parked in that parking lot, their cars, it looks like a hundred of them every night.
Yeah.
And we don't get any excise tax?
Yeah, that's part of the state law, so we follow the state on chapter fifty-nine, section five, and they're totally exempt from state and federal, you know? So most of that stuff is non-taxable for us, you know? It's unfortunate, but, I mean, they're using the roads, but we can't tax them.
The, um, city adopted two, if I could ask the auditor a question, two, uh, local options years ago. One is, it's not a lot, but it's the local meals tax option, which I believe is about point two-five, and the hotel tax option, which I'm not even sure what the percentage is, but what, what kind of receipts do we get from meals tax and, uh?
You have your.
I ha- I have the recap, but it doesn't, it has local receipts, but I don't know how to break it down.
I wanna thank you guys for staying here too, you know?
Six of us, I know.
We take care of you.
Yeah.
No, it's.
But thank you too, 'cause you're all here too.
Yes.
No, I mean, you know, you're here and.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Trying to figure out what to do.
I appreciate it.
It's important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I can let you know that.
It took me three years, I go, you know, stopping at the ninety-nine maybe once a month with my wife and, uh, you know, at the Hoyok Mall, and it says local tax. There's no local meals tax, and I had to be reminded there is. I asked four managers up there, and the four managers, none of them knew how to explain it.
It's the local.
That's because you thought the resistors won.
Yeah.
We're six point two-five now.
Six, yeah, but if you add in the local, it goes up to.
You're right, it's the one point two-five.
You know, if you multiply our factor, it goes up to zero, seven, zero.
Yeah.
And so I, I, I've learned how to figure it out, so that they, they don't get any more out of me than that, uh, point two-five, but I'd just like to know that the state's giving it back to us.
Yeah.
The, um, the mayor, Tanya, based his budget on revenue. Um, I think most of us understand that the new growth we just talked about, the, uh, sewer rate, you know, which is good to see, is working with a, with a, with a little increase, which, with a little, um, surplus, which is nothing more than, I think, a rainy day account for sewers, which is not much. Um, are, are the estimates, estimates in revenue, um, from your point of view legit and good for the mayor to, uh, to use for his budget projections?
Yes.
And the, uh, I know he worked close with the assessors on, on the, uh, that new growth figure, and that's coming in. So how about, how about telling us what free cash is gonna be next year?
I do not have that answer right now.
Last year, you told us, you know?
Yeah.
Just what happens a year later, Mr. President?
Ready, I'm not ready for free cash yet. Haven't made it there.
But we're in the ballpark in terms of revenue.
Yes.
It looks like we're with this sheet. And this is why I think this sheet is as equally as important as the expense size, is to know what the mayor is basing the budget on. And, um, I, I know, as I stated earlier, especially with the schools, the state, once again, has not finalized their budget, and, and in two or three weeks, we're gonna be voting on ours, and we have no clue if what they're telling us is gonna, gonna come true, but.
I personally would be more conservative, but they are good numbers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, with it, if you're gonna ask a department head, just say their page so that we can go to it, and everyone's on the same page getting.
Okay.
All right, Counsel Murphy?
So I'm gonna go to page five, so just to sort of professional assessment services, up, up, basically double that because it's a revale year?
We have a revale year this year. We didn't get the five-year cycle, so this is, uh, every third year. Um, this is the third year. Well, we had four years and then three, and then we will be on a five-year cycle after this, so.
So.
This is once.
Revale this year, and then next year would be two thousand and twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's part of our revale, full revale with the state. Our, our liaison from, um, Division of Local Services has already been in. He's gotten all the field cards he wants, maps, everything. He's out inspecting properties as we speak, and we work hand in hand, myself and Debbie, with him throughout this year, and everything should be finalized for January one billing.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Full revale, yeah.
When the person's going out doing the revale?
Mm-hmm.
Are they going up to the home, in the home? What are they doing?
We can, w- we can go in the home if they allow us.
But do they go to the home, "I'm here to revale"? Because you know, you see the stuff on the news, police warn you about scams and stuff.
Right.
How are we addressing that, or how are we giving notice to people?
He's not, he's not actually gonna go in the house. He'll do drive-bys, streets, he'll make sure, like, he'll take a whole street, look at all the values, make sure they're all in line with, like, similar house, similar type of, uh, neighborhood, make sure everything's in line. Um, we're the ones who go in the house if we can get in. As I have always said, homeowners and business owners, they don't have to let us in anytime, so that's their own prerogative, you know? Your, your use, you're right to refuse entry, but, you know, then we do estimates. But most of the stuff so far for sales is so automated and up-to-date, everything's online now for M L, through the M L S listing, so you're getting a virtual tour of every house that's for sale, that's through M L S. So you, you, I mean, if, if you go online, you, you know, my, um, myself, I'm a licensed, I'm not affiliated with a, with a broker. Carolyn in the office is, so she can get access to, and so can Debbie Brunel through her husband, John, but we get access for virtual, it's just a virtual tour. You can see every house that's for sale, and it helps our job easier. It's an easier way to, uh, assess properties.
Sorry, Counsel Murphy, I just wanted, in case someone calls us and says there's someone in the neighborhood.
If you would put your hand up, I would have recognized you.
Yeah, and we've had, we've had some people go out, and we do have a letter for them, and they wouldn't give them an I D, but we had a letter for them, and, um, they have a photo I D, so, and then we, we would put the make and model of the car in the letter when they went to houses, so if there was any calls, they could always call us, and we always made aware that the police department, that, you know, we'll send them an email and let them know that we have people out there, so.
Is the primary calculation of what the value of a property is or a neighborhood based on recent sales?
Sales.
And, and then I'm assuming building improvements that people have made and things along that line, so you get all those records?
Yeah, all the permits, yeah.
And, and assuming we go to a five-year situation, pardon me, ask this a little differently, where we're doing a revale as opposed to doing it on a year-to-year basis?
Yeah.
Do we see a significant change, or are we paying for?
Well, it's better, I mean.
Just to make it accurate.
Since we've done, our office has done interim adjustments every year since the state has allowed us to do them, instead of waiting three years, because then, if you waited three years on a big, big, high turn, you're, one, that third year, you're gonna get whacked with a bill.
Right.
So at least we do interim adjustments. You might get a one percent, you might get a two percent, and then you might get another one percent, but at least it's not all at once, and you get a big hit for, you know, that one bill, so. We, we'd rather do them interim every year because it helps along with the process for the full revale, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else for any of the three departments? Oh, Counsel Reagan, sorry.
I'm sorry if I missed the first part for, because it sounded like you covered values and growth before I got back in the room.
Okay.
So I'm sorry if I'm making you repeat yourself, but, um, the mayor's been talking about a lot of growth, and so five hundred thousand?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I go low, and I said that before because I'm, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna get blamed for anything that is not actually my fault.
Because you can't count it until it's.
Right, so.
I mean, it could be in process, but.
Right.
You can't actually bring it on till it's complete.
That's correct.
All right, so from a, a value and tax point of view relative to the mall and relative to, um, a potential dispersment center that's going into the old Atlas Copco?
Yeah.
So they're already paying property tax, right? So is there additional use taxes that come in? Because people are asking, relative to, say, that property, if a business comes in to do distribution, will there be more tax income for the city relative to that activity?
Depends on if, um, depends on a lot of things. It, it depends on the make of the company, like an L L C, or like, uh, Incorporated. Incorporated, they'll usually pay money to the state for machinery, and we get some of that back on our cherry sheet.
But let's say a distribution center that's.
Depends on the machinery. The building's not gonna change much, but if the machinery is taxable for personal property.
Yes. And so with the mall, with things changing from retail to entertainment?
The mall.
Is that changing the value?
Yes.
Okay, so how, if you can just kind of walk us through, like, three years back and three years forward, what's that picture looking like with the mall?
Well, the mall, obviously with e-commerce, their stores aren't the same as they were five years ago, so with that in mind.
Right.
You have different rents, and you have lower rents for the mall. We are in negotiations with them as we speak, so.
Well, I know you, and, and I'm not asking you to, you know, but, but what is known?
Right.
So, because it, it has their tax payment to the city been declining in the last three years?
The, the last three.
Or increasing?
I, in the next three years, it will be declining, the mall, the overall value.
Because of the nature?
Yes.
Of the business?
Yes.
That they're able to bring into the mall?
That's correct.
And right now, they have a lot of empty space, right?
There is some em- empty space. You have the Sears building. I'm not sure, um, what they have planned for that. They, they, Pyramid and Mr. Regalcy were in our office, and we had some really good discussions. We were proactive, because as you know, if they were to file for abatement and they win, then we'd have to come up with the money, so we're trying to be proactive to nip it in the bud and have it, you know, as a, a stable value where both sides are good, and that they'll pay their fair share of taxes also.
So if we look back three years, has their tax payment to the city gone up over the last three years or down?
Um.
Or is it pretty stable?
One year went down, depending on the tax rate, so you had a one-year decrease, then you had, I think, two increases.
And, you know, I'm just asking because of all the discussions relative to, you know, this whole override discussion and the fact that we're hearing business hardship all over the place?
Well, they do have hardship. You, you gotta, I mean, you, you're well aware of it too.
Hey, I believe it.
You know, e-commerce, everybody shops from their home.
You don't have to convince me. I'm a believer, and I, I think the businesses in our city are hurting big time.
Yeah.
Small and large.
Yeah.
Along with our elder residents.
Yeah.
Who have seen a sewer rate increase, a C P A increase. It's great, house values are going up, except so does your tax bill.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, the people are crying.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
And their values, you're thinking, are gonna go back up?
I would say, um, single families will definitely go up again this year.
It seems to me they're selling fast.
Yeah, they're selling good. I mean, I've noticed over the past, like, three months that we've had a, like, a, a little lull in number of sales.
Mm-hmm.
For the month of, um, January, February, or, uh, February, March, and April.
Mm-hmm.
There are a lot le- less sales. They're still selling at a good value, but we've had less sales in the city over the last.
We ran Southern House recently, and it sold for twelve thousand over the asking, so.
Yeah.
So it seems to be pushing.
And that's all the, you know, that's all the, you know, what Terry asked before. You have highs, you have low sales.
Right.
You, you know, we, we try and get the average and be fair for both sides, so.
But we're pretty much at a, we're at a hundred percent valuation.
Yeah, we're at ninety-nine right now.
Ninety-nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sales to assessment ratio.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Because it was mentioned, the C P A, you did give us a, a letter?
Yeah, that was in the beacon, yeah.
The C P A match rate decreases to eleven point fifty-seven percent for fiscal year twenty-twenty, so we're only gonna get eleven?
Percent, so ten percent out of the four ninety is forty-nine grand, so add another, you know, two grand, so maybe fifty grand from the state for the C P A, because we collected four ninety, so.
Just put that on the record, um.
Can I jump in with, just to follow up on that? Have you, have, I know there was extra office support put in through the C P A administrative funding relative to people coming in for abatements. Do you have any idea how many people have come in and how many abatements relative?
Yeah, ten C P A abatements.
That's it?
Ten.
You know why? Because it's so flipping hard to do.
Well, the, the income requirements are very, you know, they're very hard, the income requirements. The state sets the income requirements for the C P A, so.
I'm just talking about the form itself.
No, I know, I know.
And most of the elders voted for that because they thought they weren't gonna have to pay it?
Well, yeah.
I've been told that by I can't tell you how many, but they can't deal with bureaucracy.
Yeah, I, you know.
They just can't.
We try and help them out as much as we can.
I, I believe you, but for ten to come in when we got thousands that are.
Listen, I've had people come in and they wanted to file, they could have gotten it, and they would have saved maybe ten or eleven dollars on tax, and they said, "I'm not filling it all," so, I mean.
It's onerous. It is, it's nasty.
Yeah.
Counsel Tomlin?
Thank you, this is for Tanya. Question, uh, thank you for the work you've done since we've been on. I really appreciate it and, uh, keeping us informed and, and, uh, as, as Counsel Reagan stated, trying to get, um, you know, a look down the future, what our, you know, our, our budget's gonna be like, you know, what the money's coming in, and, I, I think that's important to know to, the future to, for us to understand, um, what we owe out there, you know, in the, in the coming years. Now, the question I had on, on page three, we, I know you talked about earlier that you were, you had some money transferred from your department this year, recently, last couple of weeks, because you didn't have employees in there, so you had extra money in there, right?
Yeah, I transferred it over to professional services.
Okay, and the i- item is, uh, professional accounting and auditing?
What page are we on?
Uh, page three.
Oh.
Five-three-zero-one-zero, is that for extra help, or is that for, uh, external auditors? The eighty-two?
That's for the external auditors, and, um, right now, I, I just got their, um, commitment sheets from two thousand and twenty, the total, and some other departments pay it too, but the total that I've received is one fourteen-five, so like I said, the eighty-eight is for our whole audit. Some offices pay a little bit, um, for their own separate audits that they need, like, single audits and stuff like that, but the, the rest of it is what, I just went with what they, um, did last year, thinking that they're providing the same service.
So that, that money that's budgeted in will, should be enough to cover you through the next year for the fiscal year?
Yes, and, and hopefully, as the years go on, it will cost less if I learn more. That's my hope.
And, and are, are your depart, are all your employees, um, are they all employed with you? You have four people total?
No, I still have that open position that I'm gonna be hiring for next fiscal year. I'm just working on a better, um, job description.
Okay, and is that would be the, one of the head administrative clerks?
Correct.
Is he listed as two? Okay, so you do have one?
I have one, correct.
Okay, and what's the prognosis of hiring that person within the next year?
Oh, it's gonna be wonderful, yeah.
So you feel you, you get somebody?
Absolutely.
That amount?
Yeah, hopefully in the first two months. I'm working with Hector right now, creating a new job description so that we can post it and then start interviewing, so I'm hopeful.
Because that'll be a big.
There's candidates out there, you know?
Oh, yeah, and that'll be a big help to you in the office.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Counsel Murphy, then Counsel Solomon?
Yeah, I'll stay with, uh, the auditor for right now, and then I'm gonna come back to the mall. So on that professional accounting and auditing, uh, how much of that is mandated? Is any of that mandated that you absolutely have to do, or is it mo- most of it done to just assist you and, and kind of make sure we're on the right track?
Um, I can tell you that the, the audit itself is mandated. That costs eighty-eight, five hundred. They do our, there is, there is sheets that the auditor. They do our, there is, there are sheets that the auditor should be able to do that all tie in together, that are submitted to the state. I just don't have enough knowledge to do them. So, that would be like the Schedule A, that's twenty-five hundred. Um, the free cash certification is ten thousand dollars that they do for us. And then they do our cash reconciliations for six thousand dollars a year. So, they reconcile the munis with the cash book for the treasurer.
Okay. So, you're paying eighty-two, did you just say a hundred thousand?
Well, the hundred and fourteen is the total of all the sheets- That they, they turned into the auditor's office for next year. But, like, the school pays seventy-five hundred, retirement pays a little bit, like, three thousand for theirs, and-
Okay, so you're paying eighty-two thousand and the other, okay.
Right, right.
So, let me, uh, I'll let us, we don't want you to just sit there and not have something to talk. No, no, no. So, can you just explain that land court expenses again? Is that when we're taking over properties?
Yes.
So, uh, can you, does that just by transaction? Or is it by the value of the property, which in many cases, I'm sure the values can't be-
No, it's by transactions, and it's also includes, um, what we paid to Sedell and Sedell, which is, uh, which is the one, the, that's my, um, outside, um, lawyers that, um, um, foreclose on the property for me.
Okay.
They do all the, the grunt work. They track down, if a person has passed away and the house is abandoned, then they, uh, track down the estate and find out if there's any living, living relatives that are interested in the house. If they are, then they will, um, negotiate either a payment plan to pay the back taxes, or if they're not interested, then, um, they notify me, and then we foreclose on the property.
Okay, and is there a, a specific fee based on the property? Or is it based on, sometimes it's a much more difficult case?
To foreclose on a piece of property, it's five hundred and fifty dollars for the court fees, and then it's a hundred and fifty for the processing. Um, so there's, it's about a grand, and then the legal expenses, I have to pay Sedell and Sedell to, to foreclose on it.
But that comes out of that same account, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, let me come back to you, Tony. Along with what Linda said, uh, since I'm a person who never really went to the mall, and I've spent more time talking about malls in the last three months than, uh, I won't tell them I don't shop there though, so, uh, I don't do much shopping online either. But, so, i- and now we're in the revalue year. Do they, do those kind of properties also have a specific revale formula? I mean, is there something that they go through as well?
We, we're-
'Cause obviously, you're not selling a mall.
We revisit every property, so, uh, commercial properties that come, you know, like, you know, we do have, like, three or four marijuana buildings that are getting revalued right now. You know, inspections-
Right.
Um, permitting for those buildings, commercial buildings, industrial buildings, apartment blocks. We go out on all those. We do all the updates. Also, we, uh, sent out income and expense reports to all commercial and then all apartment buildings. So, when we get those back, we have a better feel of rent expenses and, you know, do cap rates and, you know, arrive at values for properties.
Okay, so, let's just take this, the fact that this Sears building is empty-
Right.
And that's a hundred and, I think it was, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand square feet or something along those lines. It was like seventeen percent of the property. So, but, they're, they're, I'm pretty sure they're not applying for an abatement for this fiscal year, but if they were to apply for a, an abatement next year, I mean, obviously, right now, we're calculating that amount of money as part of our, our tax revenue, correct?
We're gonna make it so they're not gonna file for abatement.
Okay.
So, there won't be any of that, so.
Okay.
And this is, you know, we're trying to be proactive so that we don't have to worry about that.
So, in doing that-
Right.
Their value, their assessed value is going to decrease?
Yes.
And without putting you on the line, uh, percentage-wise, can you give an estimate? Is it, do you, going down three percent, five percent, ten percent, any idea?
Probably about four, four percent.
Four percent?
Yeah. Four to five percent.
Okay. So, approximately, in terms of taxes, approximately four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars-
That's correct.
Or less that they will be paying.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
I mean, we had, uh, Kmart just sold for seven, I, I, I'm sure you guys saw it. It sold for seven point two. That's not a full good sale, because that included all the inventory in the, in the, in the store. So, it's not the actual box for the store. It's all inventory, you know, registers, everything included. So, I think the, um, one of the partners who was in the Kmart reached out because he still wanted to have some stores, so he bought up like three or four, or in Western Mass, and he's keeping them.
So, one last question, so beyond the mall, so obviously, other stores are also having problems.
Right.
So, are, are the stores asking you to come in and take, or to reconsider their value?
Um, based on income and expense, you know, we'll check them out. And if, if they file the income and expense, we'll do our due diligence, and if we have to, we have them in, you know? I mean, they are our biggest taxpayers, so we have to be proactive.
Correct, yeah, and I would, yeah, we certainly don't wanna lose them.
Yeah.
We're already, uh, have enough issues.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Sullivan?
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, I'll be back to Sandy, uh, to the treasurer in a couple here to-
Page six.
Uh, page six, yes. So, um, and this is the Counselor Murphy's question, Sandy, on the land court expense?
Yep.
So, halfway through the year, we had done twenty-four thousand, the year before, forty-eight. That would track us for forty-eight, but we're looking for seventy-five. Are we planning on doing a lot more foreclosures, a fifty percent increase?
We're hoping to, um, we're, you know, we're right now working with a group with the Problem Properties in the city, which is Damian Cody, um, Sean Gonzalez, um, Crystal Barnes, um, and myself, and of course, Sedell and Sedell. So, we're trying to, um, not eliminate Sedell and Sedell, because they're the best around as far as to go to and foreclose and, um, um, but Crystal is looking into, we're doing RFPs, we're doing, um, um, receiverships for houses, so we are going to, uh, maybe cut back on that expense. But, um, as it stands, you know, it's still up in the air. Um, the other thing that, on the line while we're at it, um, that tax possession property cost, that I can eliminate, the ten thousand, um, only because of the Problem Properties. Um, Sean Gonzalez, and you have that revolving account now, where Damian has money to de- demolish. This was set up originally because the whole burden at the, at one point was always on the treasurer. Um, since we have this group, uh, called Problem Properties, um, they're able to take on some of the expenses. So, I haven't used, um, money. What I was using it for was to pay for the gas and electric if there was a lien and the property needed, um, the gas and electric needed to be made whole, that type of thing, or the DPW, sewer water, um, so that can be, um, eliminated from my budget.
Okay, uh, eliminate completely, or would you wanna leave a thousand in there?
You can take it all, my friend.
You'd beat me to the punch on that one, then. That, that's good. And you, e- even with that going out, you know, we're working everything through the pipeline. Do you know right now where we stand, uh, you know, through May twenty-eighth as far as what we've spent on the, uh, land court expenses?
Um, I would say, yeah, probably about fifty-five. Um, I haven't put in my expenses yet for June for Sedell and Sedell, 'cause I have to encumber that. Um, and, um, that would probably, um, because we haven't, we don't have that many, um, that they're working on to foreclose, um, I would say maybe another ten, if that, so. I would say fifty-five would be good, so, yeah, I could give you twenty. I'm being very generous tonight.
Oh, yeah, this is-
Keep going.
It's going to-
Let's read them all back and see what we can do here.
For, for a small office, I'm being generous.
It's-
Um, I also wanna address the floating position that Councilman Bartley brought up earlier tonight. Um, the floating clerk position was established between the treasurer and the tax collector, and it is a union position, and it was set up so that we could save money and not hire two full-time clerks, that we could, um, um, use a floating clerk to float between two offices, which would be the tax collector and the treasurer as needed. And the tax collector's office, they have moments, every three months, they have their motor vehicle excise, they have the real estate properties that come in. That person is there to cover for, um, vacation, anybody that's sick. On the treasurer's side, I have, I utilize that person a little bit more because it's a union position. I don't have a backup to my senior deputy treasurer, Rosa Burgos, who is also my payroll person. So, I believe, I'm a firm believer, as a department head, to cross-train my people. And even my assistant, who is a non-union person, and myself, we both know how to do APs in case we have a situation where we lose a person. Um, I, I'm also a big believer that if somebody is out on vacation, I expect my office to run as if it's fully staffed. Um, nothing is ever, um, behind. I make sure that all the APs are met with, the payroll is done, everything's done in a timely fashion. Um, so, that floating position, we are, uh, like, the auditor are, um, in the process of doing interviews, and I am hoping to have somebody in that position by the end of June, the beginning of July.
Okay.
Counselor Sullivan?
So, one last item would be the banking services, five-three-zero-six-zero?
Yes.
Do you wanna give up twelve on that, too?
Okay, no, you can't. I'm gonna tell you right now, I just put in a transfer to the auditor with my ones that I have, and this is not a current budget. Um, because of a lot of the online banking that we do with the water and the sewer, um, through a company, through Bill Trust, and we also, um, do, um, um, banking. I need more money in that account, so I will argue with you and say, "No, you can't cut that."
'Cause I, I make my payments online, and then Bill Trust, I believe on some of these, they also bill you for using the service, don't they?
Well, yeah, and this is the fee I have to pay, because they also, um, send out the bills. They process, it makes it easier for, um, online banking for the DPW and for the water department, because the money comes in online, they give them a statement, um, and the treasurer picks up the tab for the banking part.
So, the water department, it's not showing up as an expense in their budget?
Correct. And that was established with, um, when it first came online with the former treasurer.
Okay, I'm a second.
Just a quick, and I'll get out, 'cause, um, I don't wanna forget it. The assess, assessor, page five, uh, professional supplies went up a bit. Is that because of something? You went from-
Professional supplies.
Five-four-two-hundred, going up to three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four.
Oh, we, well, we might not need the whole thing, because we, we used to have to pay for cartridges for the, um, printers, and they were expensive. So, we got a new printer, and everything's through a, uh, um, a system now where, um, we call the number and they come and do it, so it doesn't come out. And none, none of the cartridges for printers and stuff are coming out of our accounts anymore. I think they're coming out of the IT department account, so. That might change, I mean, I, probably five hundred or whatever you could give it.
Just, I, you know, if you had to deal with, you know, your-
No, 'cause one, one year, we, we, we had to transfer some in there just to get cartridges to print, so. I mean, you know, that's-
Well, just in case someone asks, if they're looking to cut it, we wanna make sure it was missed.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much we're gonna use. We use probably between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred a year for office supplies, but without the cartridges, that's gonna save us some money, so.
Okay, and then for number purposes, 'cause it was brought up and, um, the auditor was in the hall, health insurance, we have an issue of about four hundred thousand. Dental was about, what was it?
Two-eighty-two.
So, three hundred thousand. We didn't know what free cash would be, but what did come up was the snow removal. There's a deficit, do we know that number?
I don't, offhand, I actually had it, but I left it in my office.
Mike told us, actually.
What?
Mike told us, if I can get to the page, I can.
He said seventy, seventy-five thousand.
I was gonna say, was it like a hundred thousand, about?
Seventy thousand and one and eleven?
Eleven thousand and the other, and-
That's it.
Contract, yeah.
The removal, I think, was over by eleven, and the overtime was over by seventy.
Yeah.
So-
So, we're like looking at a million dollars.
Okay, just making sure that's-
No, that, that may be covered this year with transfers.
With transfers, that's what we're waiting for.
I'm trying.
Okay, that, uh, those were in yellow, so I had to make sure I crossed them off.
We're, we're getting there, we're getting to a million.
Counselor McGivern?
Real quick, Sandy, thank you about talking about the floater, because years ago, I suggested that all clericals be cross-trained, and a stipend be given to anyone willing to be cross-trained, because departments are busy at one time while other departments are not busy, and it flips in two months. Um, you're very generous tonight, but I think the mayor wasn't so generous with short-term borrowing. Is that gonna be problematic? He cut you from a seventy-five thousand dollar request to zero?
That was, that was my error. I just didn't bring the number over. That was me.
Oh.
It, there's an updated sheet, and I'm gonna update the whole thing, and I'll submit it for your next-
Okay, my question's gone.
That was a typo.
I'll forgive the new girl.
Typos are okay, as long as we catch them.
I also wanna address this, we had talked about it earlier, and you had said something about me signing a transfer of the sixty-eight thousand dollars for legal fees for a, a settlement. Tanya and I have talked about that, and we have enough money in that account to cover your sixty-eight thousand dollar, um, not yours, but the city's legal fee, and also to reallocate the error that was made with, uh, um, the tennis courts-
Yes.
Which is fine, so we're good with that. It's just the way it was put into the munis system last year, it should've been fixed, and with the outside auditors coming in, and then a new, um, internal auditor, which she's doing a great job, she's finding all these little quirks, I'm gonna call them, and we can fix them and move forward.
I understand, it's just the finance chair gets asked a lot of questions, and justifying where a transfer's coming from is as important as where it's going.
Right, and when I saw that in my budget, I did question it, and everybody was like, mm, and I'm like, I've never had that much money in that account, so I was just gonna sit back and let the dust settle, so it has settled, and we're fixing it.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, yes. So, I'm actually putting forth a couple of questions from constituents who are following all of our discussions here. And so, one of them is, how many people are paying real estate taxes at this point?
We have, um, ten thousand, uh, ten thousand, one hundred.
Ten thousand, one hundred, okay. And her next question was, how many are senior citizens?
Ooh.
If we know. Or, or an e- or an estimated percentage.
Does, does fifty, does fifty-eight count as a senior citizen? Um, I would, hmm, that's a tough one. I would have to coordinate that with the registrar of voters and do a, you know, do a list. I might be able to find out.
This, these are all, and people, an active group of people I represent, and they expect me to know.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, um, the other question, just so our auditor knows, I'm not the only one asking for this. Um, the other question was, what are the other projects that Polio needs to pay for? You know, so that goes along with that-
The additional, the-
Thing that I've been asking, right. Thing that I've been asked, right, cuz they're following this, they're following.
Absolutely.
What's going on, and they wanna know, and so that's from there, and so.
And that's just the information of the, the things that we have not bonded yet correctly?
Correct, like what's out there that's coming, um.
Yeah, like the fire trucks and the things you voted on this year.
Exactly, exactly.
I can give you that.
We already said, yeah, we're doing this, we're doing that, and then it's like, we gotta pay the freight.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have a couple of school ones, feasibility, the salary repair, like I could probably.
Lose track, as, as we're doing them one by one.
Yeah.
You lose track.
But I mean, Bellamy came in here one day and he's like, hey, people, you know, this, he started rattling off like. Yes, it's true.
Billions and millions of dollars worth of debt, so we really need to see it.
That Jackson sewer, yeah.
Jacked it out and know what the heck we're doing.
Absolutely.
Um, and then my other questions are just related to the big audit, um, project that was done, and the people came in and reconciled our munis issues.
Oh, CLA.
Relative, well, you know, those outside auditors that came in, and my question to him is like, are you gonna make sure we're good the next year going on to, when we, you know, paid out the money?
Right.
So I just wanted to circle around and touch base that we're, we're good with our monthly reconciliations relative to these accounts. We're not gonna have a big surprise, and we're, everybody's comfortable and up on how the whole system is working, and we feel confident about that.
I feel, I do feel like, of course, I'm new, so I'm like just meeting people.
Well, right, I know, it's between you and the treasurer.
Yeah, I feel like we're working together to create better processes, and we've opened our communication, like especially, like assessors, we always talk, but like even Sandy and I, we have a lot of things that we have to do together, so it's good that we can set up and, and we meet and we set up the processes to reconcile, and so that we can, we can realize what doesn't reconcile, what we're doing wrong, what we're doing right. Like the health insurance, for example, like we all met, there's different, there's things we were missing that needed to be put in place, but it took all of us to get together to be able to do that.
All right.
So I feel confident that we're moving forward in a, in a better fashion.
Yep, I, I do, I know that my cash book, when I turn it into the auditors, is accurate because we do, my assistant and I do monthly bank recons, and I basically, as the treasurer, I have to balance my, um, work with the, uh, my cash book has to balance with my bank accounts.
Right, right.
On the munis side.
Right.
The auditor is responsible for posting it into the right line item.
That was the complicated thing.
And that was the problem with.
Yes.
The former auditor, it wasn't being posted to the right line item, and that was, uh, um, an issue between the former auditor and myself because I kept telling them, I don't, I, again, don't get involved with the munis system other than do my recs and, and, um, um.
Purchase.
Purchasing APs.
Well, I don't wanna go through the whole thing.
Right, but that's what.
But I know it had gone on for a number of years.
Right.
And it was a problem.
Right, and that's.
And it became a really bad problem.
Right, and we, we are now, I can, I will say that the auditor and I, and I are on the same page.
All right, and, and that the systems are tight, and so.
There is nothing that is.
And we have.
We, we both are very transparent when it comes to what is going on.
And so, and the procedures are good, and everybody's confident that we're not gonna.
Yep.
Fall back into whatever it was.
Yep.
And I've forgotten much of the detail, I don't even wanna go there.
Well, I, we, I personally have not forgotten, and I know it was a nightmare, but we persevered.
Yes, so, good, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Murphy.
Good, thanks, and, um, I'm not sure who this would go to, so, if the treasurer or the auditor can answer this. On page forty-eight, uh, insurance claims, benefits, travel, transfers, and other. We've got workman's compensation department, it looks like we, my, my guess is we, there was a audit and we received a sizable refund, possibly based on our performance, ninety-eight thousand in the first half of this year came back to us.
I feel like that was like, uh, something that they had paid out as some type of a settlement, and then, I don't, do you know, Sandy?
Yes, um, that was the geriatric authority and Mr. Wilcox, and we were paying him, and then, um, Mr. Wilcox lost, and he had to pay us the city back.
Yeah.
Something.
That was good for.
Yeah, okay, so, um, we were budgeting back the previous year, three hundred fifty thousand, we're only budgeting two fifty. Um, we had three hundred budgeted last year, where, where do we stand on that right now? Any, any ideas, or?
I actually, I have the document, if you want me to look it up, or I can let you know. It's probably gonna take me a minute to find the line item.
Yeah, just, just email to me, so I have it for the full, and then also, um, medical claims, police and fire. Uh, um, you know, the first half of the year looked pretty good, it was only at forty-six thousand dollars, we had budgeted two hundred. I take it, we need a way to get an answer on that also?
I really don't have that answer, personnel deals with the majority of these benefits lines.
But you could, you could tell me what.
Yeah, what, what line were you saying? I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
That would, that would be five-seven-six-four-zero.
So five-seven-six-four-zero, what was the other one?
Um. Five-one, well, geez, that one comes under.
What's the name of it?
Every.
Workers' comp was.
Workers' comp is what I had, yeah.
But it has the same object code for ten different things.
It's fine, they just have different departments, so that's why.
Workers' comp, Department nine-twelve.
Gotcha.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Just to make an, um, um, cuz I processed the AP checks for the personnel, um, there's a lot of IODs when police officers are, you know, hit with a car or something, um, it doesn't hit their personal insurance, the city picks up the injuries, and that's what that would be, the medical expenses for both police and fire.
Yeah, and it seems like they're down. It seems like they were down substantially from the budgeted number.
Yeah, they have, because they haven't had that many claims, and then the workers' comp is basically, um, DPW expense. And that's through.
Oh, Department nine-twelve is DPW?
Right, and it's through Metatrall.
Okay.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, and this goes back to the bonding and, and I'm, it's probably a combination to get an answer, but, so when we have a bond that goes out, and then, for example, we did the tennis court bond, and then we just transferred some money, uh, to do some basketball courts and things along that line. Is, is there a way to get, or let me ask this, first of all, can we get a balance of funds that are still available in the various bonds and that, that have already completed the specific project that it was bonded for, and if, and if we can get that, is that possible to then use that to do other things without coming back here?
So, I'm just gonna give you, I, you probably know this, but I'm gonna, um, give you a little bit of what goes on. So, we don't bond for anything unless the project is completed. The city council will vote on a project and say the project is two million dollars. We send that paperwork, meaning myself and, and Tanya, to the bond council. They sit there and they say, okay, they're going to eventually, when the project is done, bond for that two million. So what happens is when the, as they're getting towards completing the project, there's expenses that are incurred. So Tanya has to sit and figure out what has been expensed for that year, and we do a band in June to cover the expenses so we don't have a deficit and it doesn't affect the free cash. So on that band, the only thing we pay on that is interest. So what happens is when we get the band proceeds, this hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars, that sometimes will give us enough money to pay the interest on that band, um, until the, the bond is complete. I know that there is an Excel spreadsheet that we have that I believe Bellamy Schmidt worked on it, and Tanya has, and it'll show from the time, but it only shows bonds as opposed to bands. So the bands are the short-term expenses, and then the bonds are the ones that are twenty, thirty, and so on. So I believe that Tanya can send you that Excel sheet. We're hoping, because every time that the city council votes on a bond for, um, road repairs, the traffic lights, and you give us a true figure, that's what goes to the bond council, that is what they're working on now, and that's what she's trying to get is the figures for that. But until the, all the lights are completed, we're only gonna do a band on that, so we'll only be paying interest, so it doesn't really affect the twenty-twenty budget until we take out the complete bond.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, but let me, so, I'm, and I'm just, and I'll just deal with the thirteen million dollar bond that was put in to do improve some of the schools, and last week we talked about air conditioning for, uh, Morgan, Kelly, and Sullivan, and I know there's still money left in that bond, and I know when I was taking a tour of Metcalf yesterday, that, your child doesn't go there, right? Okay, that, I did, they were all polite when I said that.
Well, definitely not mine, definitely not mine.
Oh.
That's true.
Gotta still have a sense of humor, the old guy can still laugh, so, uh, but I know when I was there and I was talking to Whitney and, about how much money was left in that bond because obviously, clearly, we've been trying to figure out how much money we can save and how many different places to do whatever is gonna come down the road, um, so that's what I'm kinda, that's what I'm, that's what I'm kinda saying. If, if the, the project is complete and there was, in that case, thirteen million dollars, and we only spent eleven point five million.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm just kinda wondering if I can get a report as to those things that have been done and completed, but we still have bond capacity, or we, we've got some money still in reserve on those areas that we might be able to.
I can tell you, like, um, for the tennis courts, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that bond, I know you, you're using forty-five as your estimate.
Right, right, right.
Um, so the things that have been bonded that I've seen have been bonded to their full figure, sometimes they even go over.
Mm-hmm.
But if the project is not complete yet, you would have to ask the project manager because they're the P, they're the only ones that know their expected expenses. So if it's still open, they're still, like, I called them and I had to call and say, oh, what's your expected expenses until the end of the year because we wanna band for all that, but I wouldn't know that, they would know that. I could reach out.
Yeah, if you could, like, you wanna do it tonight? Come on, get on top of that.
Not today.
And, and, and to add to that, we both agreed that the expense, the expenses for that accelerated repair for those schools is six million right now at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. They are telling us that the project, which is thirteen million, so I don't know where Mr. Whitney is getting his extra money that he's gonna save, is going to be the full thirteen million. That is what I was given for a projection, so unless they're cutting a couple of windows and some doors and some whatever, the whole project is gonna cost thirteen million and it will be completed by September two thousand nineteen. Now, if that's the case, then Tanya will sit down with our bond broker, our bond counselor, and we will do a thirteen million dollar bond, September of two thousand nineteen, which will be in effect of September twenty-twenty-one that we start paying principal and interest on.
Okay, so, and again, obviously there seems to be some, cuz I know yesterday the concept was that there was a substantial amount of money there, and I thought immediately, if this, if this, that exclusion goes through, that, would that be something that we could deduct again from our, our, our next payment, so. I'm again trying to be creative, that's how, if we've got money left over and we're, you know, we gotta start putting it towards.
And I've been around enough to see the history of the schools and renovations, and usually they do not stay true to their.
They are, okay, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you all for coming down tonight for this, this has been very helpful, and we thank you for staying late. Ah, yeah, but, you know, the Bruins weren't on tonight, so this was open. But, but thank you very much, and we'll call it night for this first budget meeting.